Good evening. It's seven o'clock, let's get going. I'd like to call the two order of the town council meeting of November 16th, and would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's been a little while, so hopefully everyone will bear with me. Chair Roth House is excused this evening, even though I don't want to excuse him because he's in Aruba. But, what can I say, he's already there, so hopefully he's enjoying himself. So hopefully I will remember how to do this, it's been a while. Okay, announcements. I have mine first. The town offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, in observance of Thanksgiving. The Merrimack Transfer Station will also be closed on Thanksgiving Day. The upcoming town council meeting dates are Thursday, December 7th, Thursday, December 21st, and both of those are regular meetings at 7:00 PM in this room. And the budget meetings, everyone smile, starts January 10th at 6:30 PM here, and then we'll return for a regular town, I'm sorry, town council meeting on January 11th at 7:00 PM. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Property tax bills will be issued by November 28th and will be due by December 29th. If you do not get your bill the first week of December, please call Town Hall and Tax Collector's Office. They'll also be up online if you're interested to see what your December tax payment is. Come and join the Parks and Rec Department on Sunday, December 3rd, as we officially kick off the holiday season in Merrimack with the 30th Annual Holiday Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony. The theme this year is Rock and Roll Holidays Through Time. The annual holiday parade will kick off at 3:00 PM from the Common Shopping Plaza located at 515 Daniel Webster Highway. It will end at the Town Hall Parking Lot located at 6 Babuza Lake Road. The tree lighting ceremony will take place immediately after the parade... Sorry. The tree lighting ceremony will take place immediately after the parade arrives at Town Hall approximately around 3:45 PM. If you have any questions, please visit Parks and Rec Department website or call 603-882-1046. The annual flu drive is taking place from now until December 31st. Non-expired canned food and non-perishable items accepted in the following locations throughout the town of Merrimack: Highway and Equipment Maintenance Complex at 76 Turkeyill Road; the Fire Department at 432 Daniel Webster Highway; the Police Department at 31 Babuza Lake Road; the Library at 470 Daniel Webster Highway; Public Works Administration at the lower level of Town Hall and upper level of Town Hall, as well by the Tax Collector's Office at 6 Babuza Lake Road; and the Transfer Station in the Recycling Building at 1 Fairon Road. Some suggested donations include toiletries, hygiene products, applesauce, juice boxes, canned soups, macaroni and cheese, pasta, canned tuna, canned fruits and vegetables, crackers, cereal, bottled water, baby formula, diapers and baby wipes. All donations will be brought to the Two Food Plantations in Merrimack, St. John Newman and St. James United Methodist Church. Thank you in advance for your kind donations.
That's it, thank you, Paul. Next comment from the press or public, if anyone has anything to say about anything on the agenda, you may come up and, yep. And when you go up there, just do your name and your address, please. And hopefully, Chuck, we'll let you know if it's... You introduce yourself, your name.
Okay. Hello, good evening, town council members. I'm Karen Kontos. I live at 28 Fairway Drive. I am a member of, and I'm here with a couple of our members, of the Merrimack Energy Committee. We're very interested in the Community Power Aggregation Discussion. So, thank you.
Excellent. Timing is everything, isn't it? When the time comes, the town council, I know we have had them before, and one of the considerations is a committee, so we should keep that group in mind, perhaps. Okay, there are no recognitions, resignations or retirements, so we can go right on to the appointments. The Library Board of Trustees is going to provide an update, and if they want to come on up, I'm not sure which members, Yvette, yeah, I was going to say, Yvette, you're not going to get out of this, you're getting... I saw you trying to get out. I'll let you, I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Hi, good evening, I'm Deb Koval. I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here with Yvette Hauser, our Library Director. We also have with us Jen Jobin, who is a member of our board, and Janet Krupp, who is the trust, the trust, I'm sorry, treasurer of the trustees, that's a tongue twister. So, we really look forward to coming before you each year to share a little bit about what's been going on at the library. So, thank you for giving us this opportunity. If you have any questions as we're proceeding, just feel free to jump in. We would be happy to answer them. I'm going to start by talking about our building. As you might remember, in the past, we mentioned that we were working with SMP Architects on a site study to see where it might possibly be a good site for a future library. And we still are interested in that, but our energies and our attention have really been devoted to the current building that we're in. We've had a lot of things that have had to be addressed, and that's really where we've been focusing this year. You probably have seen that the granite steps have been completed out front. We are really glad about that. The elevator refurbishment project was supposed to begin this week, but due to some supply chain issues, has been delayed until December. But, we're still going to be going forward with that. We also have been looking at the HVAC and chiller, and we recently accepted a proposal from a retro commissioning agent who is going to come in and look at the current system, see what can be used, what needs to be changed. We felt like it was a really cost-effective way to get an overview of the current system we have. We don't want someone to come in and say, "You need new everything." We want to see if there's some things we can do with the controls and other things that will let us save part of the system, or at least have a plan to proceed in a way that looks at the whole system in its entirety, not just piecing together bits and pieces. So, we felt like that was the most cost-effective way for us to go forward. So, that will be starting, and it's going to take about two days for them to go through the building, but it won't impact service at all. We are also exploring replacement of the slate roof, and we have some repairs that need to be done there because we have leakage. We, on the positive, had some new phones purchased and installed with guidance from Jonathan Diaz in the Town IT Department, and we're very, very grateful to him for all of his help with that. On the not-so-great news, we did have a flood this summer after a severe storm. It came in the north door, down into the clump room and staff workroom, so I'm guessing that's something that needs to be addressed. I think that's been an ongoing issue because of drainage in the parking lot. Thankfully, we had staff in the building at the time. They were able to get in there and evade it and get it to a point where people could leave and we could get it taken care of as quickly as possible, so. So, that's where really we've been devoting a lot of our attention. As you can see, there's a lot that needs to be taken care of there, so. Yvette?
Thanks, Deb. So, I'm going to talk about things happening in the building and outside the building. We recently, in terms of our services and programs, we rolled out a new catalog overlay. If you've been on our website, you will have been redirected to the new catalog. It is dynamic, it's easy to use. The app was just rolled out today, and you can get the app by searching G-Milcs, G-M-I-L-C-S on your App Store, on, you know, the Apple Store or Google Play. And that's, we're just really excited about it. It was a long time coming and getting incredible feedback from the public that's using it. We've also, something interesting, consortium-wide over summer, during our summer reading program, the library consortium got together and planned a library hop where they created a passport and patrons could pick up a passport and visit all of the libraries in your consortium. And that's 13, 12, 13 libraries. And get a, get your passport stamped and be entered to win some raffle card to something, I don't, I didn't win, so I don't know what the prize was. But, it was really exciting for the patrons, and each library set up a little, you know, place in our library of, this is the hop location. And we had one of our staff, Stephanie, who's very, very creative, she created a selfie location where there was like a postcard of Merrimack, and you could stand in front of the picture and take your selfie and hashtag G-Milcs Library Hop. And it was really nice to hear feedback from other communities, you know, where, you know, they're very impressed with our library, and I was very proud of that, you know, because we've worked really hard and, you know, you guys have supported us. So, that was really great. And just in terms of G-Milcs, I'm still the G-Milcs President. It's a three-year term, and I'm still, I still have like a two years left or a year and a half left, so. I'm, I'm really proud because I've, I have part of pushing some of these initiatives through as the Board President, but. So, moving on to the collection. Our seed collection that we kind of talked about last year when we, we were before you, really popular this spring and summer. We've been working with the Moose Mountain Seed Collector Group, and they're in Milton, New Hampshire, but we have one of the Garden Club members as a member. And so, they really spearheaded and provided us with all of the seeds. They were locally sourced, they're all, you know, known New Hampshire plants, you know, successful plants. And right now is the time when they're harvesting the seeds and packing the seeds, so that we can replenish the collection. And we're also working with the Merrimack Garden Club. We had some seed donations from residents who were just really excited to see it as an option for them. So, we're going to keep continuing with that. We also, our Library of Things collection, you will remember, was highlighted on WMUR, New Hampshire Chronicle, back in March, when it was, we were part of a segment called Beyond the Books, where they highlighted several other libraries in New Hampshire, and we were really pleased to be included in that. And then, another thing that's new to our Library of Things collection are puzzles that are, were recommended to us by the New Hampshire Alzheimer's Association. These are puzzles that have 32 pieces, or maybe 65 pieces. They also include questions to prompt conversation and really try and build connection between the person doing the puzzle and maybe an aide or a family member guiding them. So, that's something that we saw was a need in the community. And we're also going to start working with the Reed's Ferry Women's Club. They asked to partner with us, and I'll talk about more of our partners, but they would like to help sponsor some of these Alzheimer's objects for part of that collection, so that's going to be coming. In terms of the collection, kind of library, library geeky stuff, we use the Dewey Decimal Collection or the Dewey Decimal Classification System, which is not, it's moving out of favor. You know, it's complicated for people, for patrons who don't want to translate what they want into numbers and then translate it back into a title or a subject. So, there has been a movement going around libraries that, to ditch Dewey. I brought this to my board, and my youth services staff have really been running with this and redoing the catalog or the items, so that they're going to be more... It's a, it's a word-based classification, classification system. So, if you want trucks, you go to trucks. You won't go to, I don't know what the number for trucks is, but you won't go to that, you'll just go trucks, you know. And then, there's, there will be, you know, possibly like materials there. So, a great example is like if you're, if you're looking for Italy, then there might be books on Italy, books on Italian food, books on, on travel, language, and so you get kind of one-stop shopping for that. I'm not sure if that's where we're going to go, you know, but youth services, we're going to pilot it with them because it's already kind of like that in youth services with some of the, some of their topics. So, that's something also to look forward to that we're going to start working on. We added the Eric Carl Picturebook Museum Pass, which is down in Massachusetts, to our museum pass collection. And for anyone who's very into picture books, this is the place to go. It's, it's a nice drive, it's a long drive, but you have the pass and then you spend the day at the Eric Carl Museum. And just to make a note about collections, since I'm talking about the collection, you might have heard that or seen libraries have, there's an increase talking about libraries and books and challenges and things like that, you know, in the news. And just to let you know, we have a collection development policy, and we have, you know, a policy if you want to have that appealed or discussed or anything like that. And if you have any questions about that, it's on our website. I'm happy to talk your ear off about the collection and policies. I'm sure Deb is very happy to also talk your ear off about collection and policies. Yes? Because you're also a school librarian.
Sure, Yvette, yes. And I do know the number for trucks, but I thought I wouldn't interrupt you.
Do you? Is it like the...
It's 629.
The tire tracks are fine.
I'm not a numbers person. Anyway, so, moving on. We, to talk more about our partnerships, we continue to work with our longstanding partners like Merrimack Fire and Rescue and Merrimack Police Department, who both came to our trunk-or-treat. It had to be moved inside, but the fire truck was there and, you know, the fire, firemen and women were there. And they were, they were hysterical because they're, are they here? No. Okay. So, their, like, tent, their table when we moved it inside, because the truck was outside, you know, that was the draf of the kids. And when they came inside, it was just them in their uniforms, not, not the fire gear, with candy on the table. Just that cool. Just, they didn't need to have costumes and all the things. It was just the candy and them. And I was like, yeah, because I was walking around as Marticia Adams, and it was like, I have to work really hard, and they're just cool. But, we do thank them, both, both of these departments for partnering with us, and the kids get a blast, you know, they just think it's a wonderful thing, and it's just great that they, they like to partner with us. So, we also were, were working with the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Safety. We distributed COVID tests free from March through October when they ran out. And we did have to get a second supply of them, but then, you know, they ran out in October. We also worked with the CSA Farm Share to serve as a pickup location for residents who participate in their program. And this is a program that works with local farms in New Hampshire. Usually, they are run by people who are new Americans, people who have immigrated to the United States. And, and then the, the customers are people who want to have fresh, local produce. And it seemed to make sense to us as a pickup location. I had someone who is, who used to be a resident and a patron and very involved in my writers' group, reach out to me and say, "Hey, I'm working here in Manchester now. Would you like to be a pickup for Merrimack?" And I'm like, "Yes, we would, we would love to do that for folks." And it seemed to make sense also because we have the seed library. And it's this whole thing about, you know, putting the connections together about where your food comes from. And so, it was great, that worked out great for us. We also worked with the Merrimack Outlet Malls. They reached out to us saying, "Hey, we have a Little Free Library now. Would you like to stock it and provide storytime during the summer?" And so, Youth Services Department figured it out and put it together, and, and they did that all summer, you know, out by the Little Free Libraries where the playground is for the kids. We will again host the Operation Santa Tree from the Lion Lioness Club. The tree is up, tag should be on tomorrow. So, if you are interested in doing that and helping your neighbors, please come by, pick up a tag and take advantage of Black Friday shopping. We have been working with the Merrimack School District's Department for Student Wellness. We did a community read with them about child and family mindfulness. And I know that, you know, Merrimack Police Department has worked with them a lot. So, that was also nice to, to help support our families that way. We, we are, what I'm seeing with, with groups that reach out to us, they really want to help us, help them build a place where community gathers and where people can make connections. It's definitely something I'm seeing post-COVID. So, we, we've been working with Southern New Hampshire Pandemic Parents to co-host a parenting book group monthly. We've also been doing a monthly coffee hour support group for caregivers of youth. And Merrimack friends and families approached us to see if we could partner with them to co-host some of their programs at the library. Moving on to staff. After many months of research, we rearranged the furniture and combined our two service desks into one service desk. It's a little amazing that it took us this long to figure out that it was confusing when you walked in our building that you didn't know if you should go here or here. It's clear to us because we live in library land. Not clear to anyone else who does not reside in library land. But, this made it so much easier for our patrons. It made it easier for staffing and staffing a public desk. Both staff have been cross-trained on the other department's tasks. Senior staff, like myself, are also helping to staff the supervisor desk. So, if you want to see me on Monday mornings, I'm there till 12:30, and I can get you a new library card. We also were able during this desk reconfiguration, and it was really kind of, the trend we were seeing in the other G-Milcs libraries is really combining and cross-training. We were able to promote from within some of our full-time staff to, one is a professional library position because this one person just graduated from library school, so that was a great opportunity for us. And then, another person who'd been working up through the Circulation Department into another kind of slightly more supervisory role. So, that was also really nice. We, we do have a couple of staff who are starting their library degrees, which is always really interesting to me to see that this is still something that the young people want to do. Really nice and very exciting for us, and we're very proud of them. I want to make sure to, to mention Kathy Walter, who is the head of our Youth Services Department. She's the one who's really been making these connections with pandemic parents and having the coffee hours with parents and caregivers. She worked with Girl Scout Melody Rowe, who you remember was here in your chambers earlier this year to talk about her gold award for the Girl Scouts. And Kathy assisted her with the story walk at Veterans Park. So, thank you to Kathy for that. I want to mention that Jennifer Stover, who's the head of our Technical Services Department, and she's also the acting director when I'm occupied or away. She was accepted in the Primate Supervisors Academy, which is happening this week in Concord. So, we're also very proud of her. Back to you, Deb.
Okay, just a few more things. The trustees, we held a retreat and set our goals for the year. One of those things was to do a strategic plan, which we are now working on with a consultant named Deb Hoadley, who's been a consultant, a library director, and a former library trustee. Our board has changed a little bit. We had Molly Mortimer join us to fulfill a vacancy we had for a one-year term. And then, we also were pleased through this process to get two alternates. So, we're very excited to have Ruth Marie Swisher and Karen Freed as alternates on our board. We have been working on our budget, which we will come and see you about in the next few months. We are also keeping an eye on some different legislation that's going forward with the help of the New Hampshire Library Association and Library Trustee Association, who keep us aware of this. There's information about e-p publishers, that's a big deal, you know, how we can provide electronic books at a reasonable cost with licensing. Also, there's some legislation potentially about library boards and different collection development things, as Yvette mentioned. And I'll just say finally that we are very grateful for all of the generosity in the community. We want to thank people who have donated things to the collection. In particular, I wanted to thank Dr. Quimby for the ongoing memorial fund in honor of his son Barry Quimby. We also are really grateful for the donations from the Merrimack Lions and Lioness Club for funds to stock the Carrying Cupboard, which we provide in partnership with the Laura's World Fund, and also the Greater Nashua Smart Start Coalition, who gave us a grant of $332.85, which we are going to use to purchase toys to promote early literacy and social emotional learning. We couldn't do any of this without the support of the Friends of the Library and the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund, who are really committed and wonderful volunteers who help the community and us very much. And of course, the Merrimack Garden Club, who make the library gardens so beautiful. So, with that, do you have any questions for us?
Anyone? Paul?
Slowly. What is the APP acronyms?
The APP acronym is G-M-I-L-C-S.
Okay.
So, any but...
Library account to use it?
Um, yeah, I mean, but it's...
I went there and asked me for a library number and a password.
Did you go there?
I, I, yeah, I...
While I was talking?
He was so excited to try it, Yvette. He was like, wow!
So, anyway, I just, I thought that was interesting. I didn't, I don't know my account number or password.
Yeah, I don't either. I just, it's, I have my card, so I just...
I think mine is expired or something.
Well, then, let me invite you to come on down to the library for a tour and to get a library card. And of course, we would all welcome you to come down anytime. Yvette would be happy to give you a tour. And we also have an email list, which we would love for you to join, which keeps you updated on programs and events. And you can find that on our website.
Nancy?
Great, thank you. I just thank you for all the work that you do. I did see on social media a number of people that were participating in the tour of libraries and posting photos. So, that was a lot of fun. The other thing I was going to, I was going to ask, and I know there's another representative in the, in the room, if it would be possible for you to include the local reps as to information around the legislation that you keep an eye on?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Because then, we're there and it would help us to maybe step in and testify and...
No, that would be great.
And sign in, so if you could do that, I'm sure all the reps with the ones on here as well would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
And you mentioned the, the weekly email that you guys put out. I get that, and I really appreciate it. There's a lot of good information that comes out, and it's always entertaining to see what's going on and try to keep up. Thank you.
I agree.
Thanks.
Andy?
I'll just say, you know, it seems to me like there's running a library, and then there's what you guys do. And obviously, you guys enjoy your job, which probably makes the, the library a much bigger asset to the community. So, it's apparent to me you guys go above and beyond. So, thank you very much. I will say that the ditch Dewey thing gives me a little anxiety. I can't believe I'm old enough to actually see a, a system like that retired. I don't know what to think about that, but thank you for going above and beyond.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are very grateful to all the staff members, certainly led by Yvette, but everybody there really does do go above and beyond on a daily basis, so we're grateful for that.
Great. Barbara?
So, in my younger days in high school, I was a library runner for the new Bedford Public Library in the main library building, which had like four floors of back stacks, and we used to have to run up and down those stacks. I can't believe they're retiring Dewey, but there you go. All things in time.
There are complications with his classification, you know, which I can talk to at length if you want to. And it just...
Monday morning, at the...
Before 12. Between, yeah, 9 to 12, I'm there. And, yeah, but it's, it's really interesting when you dig in and, and see how the world has changed. And our system has not changed to make it make sense for someone to find what they want.
But, I, I just think it's amazing because having worked in a library for a couple of years and seeing what you guys are doing, it's like, it has grown immensely in what you're capable of doing other than just stacking books every day. So, congratulations, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
At least I think so.
I think it's, you're just, we're reflecting the Dewey system being retired. It's a little symbolic to me at that time.
You know, it's like back when the card catalog, and I was an adult.
That's right, that's right.
You know, using a card catalog because I worked, I was in a university library.
They would have, the present generation would have no idea how to use it. It's like the old cellular phones, whatever.
Your rotary phones?
Thank you, rotary, see? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other questions?
So, you said the elevator project has been put off till next month?
Yeah, till, it's...
And that's notice going out? Because I've gotten several notices that you were starting.
Yeah, yeah, it was supposed to, yeah.
Yeah, and we and the staff worked really hard to find a way to provide services to people while this was going on, made sure that there, there are times when the building would have to be closed, but that will be minimal and that they would be able to provide and that they would be able to provide as much open time and services while the process was going on. So that will just all get moved till December.
Hopefully that will go smooth as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Same to you. Next on the agenda is the annual review with Conservation Commission per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6. At least annually, there should be an annual review with the Conservation Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. And welcome Steve, Steve Perkins, who's the Chair of the Commission.
Good evening. Thank you for having, having us again this year. Let's see if I can share what I'm looking at. There we go. Again, this year I haven't changed up the agenda. Kind of this will help me stay on the rails here and get through the necessary parts, no, not go too long. We are missing four, there are four names from last year that are not here this year. We, we said goodbye to Mike Boivere, Mike Drew, Cindy Klein and Gina Rosati. Together Gina, Cindy and Mike Boivere, they had, they were with us for over 25 years, if you summed up their years on the Conservation Commission. So you can imagine that was a pretty massive void to fill. We've had some success though. We, we've added Charis, Andrew, Tom and Danielle. Tom and, and Andrew were known quantities. We've, they had previously served on the subcommittees, different subcommittees. And we just, we had some good fortune that we found Danielle and, and Charis had both reached out to us looking to be involved with the commission. So we, we are full still and I do appreciate how quickly, especially the appointment committee helped us, helped these, helped us fill these vacancies as they materialized. Again, I like, I think this is helpful to have this reminder here. A lot of what I'll talk about tonight isn't relative to, you know, what the, you know, the, the true mission of the commission, the charter. These are, these are the, this is our obligation. I'll kind of talk tonight about some of the things we do above and beyond this or, or toward this goal. Finances, again, we've spent some money this year from 53 and Fund 51. We've, we've purchased supplies, obviously, for bridges, you know, small construction projects like that, the seedlings themselves we bought. We invested a little bit in a, a, a map refresh of the GIS, the parcel maps, along with a, an RPC. But on that, these, these numbers really are relatively unchanged from previous years. Again, this is our budget, virtually identical to the previous year. But these are, these are some important functions that are all, this is maintained by community development. But these are the things that go on behind the scenes and keep us running. Here's some of our accomplishments. I tried to keep the list short and really show you just the highlights here of what we've accomplished in 2023. I couldn't start any list of accomplishments without the top item being, you know, a recognition to all the subcommittees and all the other, the scouts, the New England Mountain Bike Association and all the other volunteers that really do all the heavy lifting to keep these trails and these parcels usable for us. We have reviewed a number of projects. In fact, we've reviewed every project that's been sent to us for, you know, to review before it goes before the planning board. A lot of times we have no feedback, but it feels good to know that we thoroughly vet everything that's sent in our direction and at least ask good questions and get, you know, get the answers we're looking for and, and provide that to the planning board. We did our 23rd annual seedling giveaway. I, I think what is no longer a well-kept secret is how good the product is that comes from the New Hampshire forestry, from the nursery. Because we, again, this year we had some headwinds. A lot of the items we wanted were sold out. I mean, people know how, how good that product is and, and it's a lot about timing. Gage was pretty tenacious though. We used a number of different sources this year. He did a lot of legwork and we, when we finally had the event up at Courier Orchard, which has been a gracious host every year, we've done this. We, we did have a fantastic assortment and you can see there in the picture, the weather cooperated, had a fantastic turnout again. Here, and I've talked about bridge building a little bit. If you haven't seen him recently, this was one that was done last month by the Horse Hill Nature, the Horse Hill Subcommittee. Mark Gagnon led the charge on this, but look at that bridge. This, it looks like we paid a contractor to come in here and build this thing. I mean, it was a few volunteers, $500 worth of funds roughly out of Fund 53. And it's outstanding work, several hours. Some more accomplishments from 2023. That piece, that inset on the bottom right, I don't think I've ever shown you this. This is a tool that we've had it for since February of 2020. Basically, it's a mosaic. I, I can't, I couldn't, you know, I would bore you to death if I listed all the variables and different data sets that went into creating this. But essentially what it does is it assigns a 1 through 25 mitigation score for every parcel in town. So really, when we, when something is presented to us or we look at a, a mitigation value of a certain property, we can go back and dig into these details and really make some educated assumptions about what the, what the mitigation value is based on where it is in respect, respect to wetlands, where, you know, what soil types and all those different variables. We did have Ellen attended the, the NHACC Wetland Workshop. That took place over seven weeks. She dedicated a lot of hours to that project, but you know, great source of knowledge about wetlands. We also had Charis, Danielle, Ellen and Andrew all attended this year's NHACC workshop, which is fantastic because other than Ellen, the other three are new to the Conservation Commission. And one of the workshops they did, they all were able to attend the, I, I think the course is called Fundamentals of Workshops, but it's just a great collaborative opportunity to go there, learn some of the tools to become a, you know, a more effective conservation commissioner. And then finally, we completed our, our land conservation and investment program survey at Wasserman Park. And that's a commitment we made to the state when we took those funds and, you know, accepted those funds to purchase Wasserman, that we'll go out and walk that thing every year. And here you can see the weather wasn't great when we were out there. Enthusiasm is much higher than it might have looked on some of the faces of the people on the bottom right. Once we got going, but we, we religiously go out there and execute this walk every year. And we, we end up having a pretty good time. This year it was attended by five members of the Conservation Commission and three members of the public. So and essentially we just walked the boundaries and, and, and I can report that the property is in good shape. We didn't fill even half a bag of trash. There is some invasive species there. The problem is pretty significant in areas, but it's, it hasn't grown and trails are in great shape. Place looked good and, and the fall foliage was just about right for our walk. Some of our goals and activities for 2024, again, it's the heaviest lift, so I always include it first on the slide. It's just that the, the maintenance and the upkeep and coordinating these community work efforts that go on out there. Our outreach and recruitment, several of these probably address, you know, speak toward that. We do, I, we should complete that partial, that parcel map refresh pretty soon. I think the first quarter of next year, we should wrap that up. And one important component of that was we took all the, the new, you know, the chapter 111 modifications and we're making sure those are, you know, overlaid onto the parcel map. So just so it's not confusing. I mean, that was one of the goals of that project that you helped us finally culminate last year. So we'll make sure that's on all the new parcel maps. We're going to resolve the field farm access situation and hopefully we can do that in the coming year. We've got a number of outreach opportunities. Some of our new members, Charis in particular, brings with her a breadth of knowledge about invasive plant management. It's something we've talked a lot about, but without investing, you know, a lot of money, there are, there are some things we can do to mitigate some of those problems and she's gonna, she's gonna be our, our spiritual leader toward that effort. And again, that student rep, if, if, once we, once we get the green light and we can do that, we're really excited about that. We do have two former educators on the commission, both Tom Martinson and, and Charis were both formerly teachers. So that heightened what was already a high level of enthusiasm. Final, finally, goals for the coming year, a new one on here is number 12. Number 12, something, we've kicked this can down the road for several years just because we didn't feel like we had a power user. Someone to become our, you know, our power user of a, a, a new social media platform. So I think we're getting very close. Nick from Merrimack TV actually came to one of our recent meetings and, and he was, gave us a lot of useful feedback. I think we're ready to finally have a Facebook page, not a forum, but a Facebook page, just to help us communicate some of these vital dates and information, like, you know, we're doing a cleanup at this parcel or we have vacancies on this subcommittee. Something we were addressing before with Merrimack Outdoors, but probably weren't reaching as many people as we could with a, with a sanctioned page. Continue to try to maintain a punch list because occasionally we do get on short notice a scouting, you know, a scout looking for an opportunity or a different group looking for an opportunity at one of the parcels. We try to have something ready to go so, so we don't have to convene a meeting to talk about or to wait for a meeting to talk about it, that we can have some off-the-shelf type projects with varying degrees of, of labor required. And finally, you know, we're monitoring e-bikes. E-bikes is interesting. We, most of the feedback we get, and this is why we like to serve on the Conservation Commission, one of them. Most of the feedback we get is generally positive. It's rare that we, we hear about concerns or, or concerns or complaints. We usually never complaints, but occasionally we hear about litter, occasionally we hear about dog residue. Sometimes ATV, sometimes hunting. But one, one reoccurring theme we're starting to hear about more and more is e-bikes. E-bike usage. And we did address some of this in the chapter 111. But it's just, I figured I would mention it here in this forum that, and, and that may not be a problem we address here in Merrimack. That may be something that's, you know, addressed through legislation up in Concord. I don't know, but it's, it's a, it's, 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 yeah, I guess that was all I had to say about that. But in terms of where the town council can help, I think you've done everything for us that we, we, we could ask for up until this point. We are hope, we're hopeful that at some point the Merrill's Marauder Bridge, we know what the status of that is. It would take a lot of money to do something. Maybe there'll be an opportunity. It's something we certainly keep in the back of our mind. It was a great to have it when we had it. We do, we appreciate your opportunity to provide the feedback to you. And we hope you'll continue to ask us and engage us when, when you, when we can be of use there. We don't know what the ask is with fields farm. We do know that eventually it's going to take an entrance and that entrance is going to have to be on Amherst Road. But we've got a lot more work to do with that, just trying to figure out where we would situate parking and so forth. And, and once we have more details, we'll, we'll start with the town manager and work from there. And finally, we, we have also already been working collaboratively with the town manager. We know that there's going to be three or four more phases of FE Everett Turnpike widening. And some of those are gonna, they're gonna impact wetlands and there's gonna be some opportunities, hopefully for a land mitigation. And we, we have identified some potential parcels that could be a part of that, that mitigation strategy. Finally, if we named everyone, I could, I could stretch this into three or four slides, but the, the, the amount of support we get from the community development, the town manager's office, public works, the police, park and recreation, it, it's fantastic and, and we're appreciative. And we just want to, you know, once again, say thanks for all those who let us do what we enjoy doing. And other than that, take any questions. I'll try to answer any questions you have.
I don't have any questions, but I'll, I'll just add on to what Steve said. I'm always amazed when I go to these meetings and I see the number of people volunteering for our conservation land. And it's not just the people volunteering to come to these meetings and review plans for wetland impacts, but it's, it's all the subcommittees that are volunteering to make sure that certain areas are taken care of. It's the, the people that are volunteering to go out and make sure the trails are cleared. The, the bridge that he showed, going out and building the bridge is just one aspect of it. Those folks packed the material in and then they packed all the, the waste and everything out. And so a ton of hours goes into all of the people volunteering to make sure our conservation lands are taken care of. And so huge shout out to all of those folks to help Merrimack be a better place. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the work you folks do. As, as Andy so eloquently said, there's, there's a lot of work involved in maintaining these lands and, and watching over them. Sometimes it's not very well appreciated by people that want to use them for other reasons or other thoughts. So all the work you guys do is, is very much appreciated. And we have a fair amount of conservation land in Merrimack and we're fortunate to have that and even more fortunate that are people willing to put their time in to help maintain it and keep it in better, the best shape they can. So thank you for that effort.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Okay, next, two public hearings. The first one, consideration of changes to Chapter 142 Parks and Recreation Areas. The town council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance, there's, it's sitting right down. Acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 142 Parks and Recreation Area of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article 115. And hopefully this is the, hopefully it lasts, right? This is the last. If everything goes well, let's put it that way. There were recommendations, we had a discussion before and there were recommendations, which you have included. So go right ahead. Do you want to say anything first, Paul?
No, Matt, Matt and the Parks and Rec Committee really did a great job looking at this chapter in the ordinance 142 and bringing these changes forward. And Matt, take it away.
Okay, I, I was trying to keep things quick and simple tonight. Obviously after our last meeting last month, whenever that was, went through and made the, the corrections, the renumbering, the, the change in the bullets as we discussed. And so everything should be up to date as we discussed. So I hadn't planned on going through another.
Okay, go open your public hearing, I guess.
Well, one thing, one thing that they, this does do is we added metal detecting into this. Because I, it's just important to bring that back out because my office, Matt's office gets calls all the time, is metal detecting allowed on property? Now there's strict guidelines to metal detect on town land. So that's one of the positives that came out of this rewrite of this ordinance as well.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:47. And the rush is coming to the
Rush to the microphone.
I will close the public hearing, seeing no activity at 7:48. What would the council like to do?
Would, we need to move this to, with the public hearing and everybody happy with it, I moved that we, moved that we moved this to the next meeting consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tom Keding, second by Barbara Healy. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, so 6:00.
Thank you, Matt.
The next is a public hearing related to the Bear Christensen Fund acceptance. The town council will hold a public hearing to authorize the acceptance of the amount of, but not to exceed $10,000 for the Bear Christensen Fund pursuant to RSA 31:95-B in Charter Article 8-15. And who's going to be doing this?
Are you going to talk, Chris, on this or you want me to?
Adam, but. Chris Christensen. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm Chris Christensen. I wasn't sure if Adam was going to say something since his name was on the
Exactly.
For most of you, this is a repeat from last year and the year before. Annually, we try to give some money to the fund and we split the money between the principal account and the income slash expendable account. For background, if you have $1,000 in the, in most of these accounts that the trustees hold and you can make 3% on it or 4% now on CDs, by the end of the year, you have very little money to spend. So we put money into the income fund, which can also grow and have a little bit more money to be expendable. I'm pleased to see Matt here. I'm pleased to see Matt here. We talk with him periodically about things that might go on. Washman Park, I know you're going to be doing the budget soon, and one of the items in there is better beach access for handicapped. And one of the things we're looking at is that that requires, or might require, a specialty wheelchair with big float-type wheels to get across the sand. And that would be the type of thing that we could do with this fund. Those things cost $2,500, $3,500, so... We're pleased to be available, and that's up to Matt to make those requests. But I hope you'll back him up on those types of things. So, that's basically it. We're donating $7,000 to principal, $3,000 to the income slash expendable fund.
Excellent. Okay, I will open the public hearing at 7:50. Public has any interest in providing testimony? Trying to spin it for you. I'm seeing none. 7:50, I will close the public hearing at 7:51. Any questions, or the pleasure of the council?
Yep, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, I move that we accept, authorize and accept the amount of, but not to exceed $10,000 for the Bear Christensen Fund pursuant to RSA 31:95-B in Charter Article 8-15. Authorize the town manager to sign anything necessary, and offer our appreciation to the donors for their wonderful contribution to this fund.
Second. Motion made by Tom Keenig, seconded by Barbara Healy.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a friendly amendment, is that we break out the $10,000 to say $7,000 for principal, and $3,000 for the investment interest fund.
That's what I meant, but I read the wrong piece of paper.
That's fine. Just have it in the minutes, because this way the trustee of trust funds know where the money's supposed to go.
So, agreed by Tom and Barbara. You agree to the...
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, it passes 6-0-0. And I would like to be able to request that we move the new business number two, which has to do with the Rotary. Can we move it so that you...
Thanks, Chris.
So, who wants to, this is the new business number two, has to do with the donation of funds to Kids Cove by the Rotary. And Lynn's here for that, so it's okay with everyone, without exception? Okay. So, donation of funds to Kids Cove Playground at Twin Bridge Park, the town council, to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $812 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack to Parks and Recreation for the purpose of replacing the broken Sanddigger Play Element in Kids Cove pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Hey, Lynn?
Lynn Christensen, representing the Rotary Club of Merrimack. I'm on board there, and we're always looking for things that we can do to help the community. Came to our attention that the Sanddigger had been broken. It was going to cost almost as much to fix it as it would to replace it, so we offered to come up with the donation that, so that Matt could go and buy the Sanddigger and install it there.
Nice. Okay.
People are always asking us what we, we raise this money all the time, and they come in and they go to buy a tree, and they say, "What do you spend this money on?" And for whatever reason, they don't seem to understand. That's why I've been publishing some of the things.
Which is excellent.
This is, this is one of the things that we're doing. And in fact, I'll digress just a little bit when we talk about trees. One of the things that, not quite the same, because we are not spending money from the funds that we are raising and selling the trees, but individual Rotarians have donated money to provide Christmas trees to a number of people who cannot afford them.
Nice.
Just one of, one of the more, one more thing that the Rotary Club does.
And a lot of community members anonymously doing those kinds of things, too. You're right. Any questions or comments from the council?
No, the Rotary Club does a lot of great work for the town of Merrimack, and I don't, I don't think anybody should be surprised at that, at this point, unless they just don't pay any attention to our meetings and things of that nature. But, I mean, you're constantly coming up and making donations, and we very much appreciate that. It helps out our community a lot. And that and all your work with 4th of July and other activities around the town are very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And the Turkey Trot coming up.
Turkey Trot is coming up. There's still time to register.
Oh, yeah, I'll register. Barbara?
Also, speaking of Christmas trees, the 22nd, I believe, is when the trees get delivered.
And hopefully, the truck will not get stuck going into Watson Park again.
Oh, did it?
That was kind of exciting.
Yep.
Was it wet the last? Oh, bottomed out.
Yeah.
Well, at least you know about it this time.
That's right.
So anyways, make your plans to get your fresh, live Christmas trees.
We're going to start selling on December 1st. Four to eight during the week, eight to eight on Saturday, and 10 to eight on Sunday. If you want to come help and hang out with us while we're selling trees, we'd be glad to have the help.
And it's not an invitation for a party.
Oh, yeah.
Don't get the wrong idea.
We've got a fire pit down there, and there's going to be one, there's one weekend, we're going to do some whores. So, come on down.
Nice. Okay, any other questions? Any motion?
Yeah. Move to accept the donation of $812 to the town of Merrimack for the purpose of replacing the broken Sanddigger Play Element thing at Kids Cove. I've seen it. I don't know what it is.
So, accept and expend.
Accept and expend, and then the town manager to be empowered to sign any paperwork necessary to complete the transaction.
Second. Motion made by Barbara, seconded by Nancy Murphy. What was her name again? I didn't see her. It's going to be good, it's only the beginning of the evening, and we've already got downhill. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Seeing none. 6-0-0, passing. Thank you, Lynn. Okay, let's go back to the regular order here. Legislative updates from state reps.
I did not receive any emails, Nancy or Wendy is in the audience, but Wendy's here. Wendy's in the audience.
Just go ahead and introduce yourself, Wendy.
Thank you. I am Wendy Thomas. I'm one of the many state reps we have in Merrimack. And today, I wanted to update you on two specific things. One is regarding the Everett expansion. We had a meeting here at, in this room, and then a little bit later, they had a 10-year DOT meeting in Hudson, and I went to that. And I stood up and I spoke based on the information that we got from the meeting that was here to remind them that the town is very interested in, during, during the expansion, to have an emergency access to those apartment buildings behind 3W Daniel Webster, which is where the trampoline place and the, and, you know, because we're going to get a lot more traffic on DW. So, there was concern about that, and they seemed to be open to that. The second thing we asked for, and this was with Bill Boyd, Representative Boyd, he was at the meeting as well, is for the DOT to do some kind of a study on Daniel Webster during the high-traffic times of the day, morning rush hour, evening rush hour. Again, the concern is that emergency vehicles might not be able to get where they need to go quickly. Not sure that we have any answers to that, but it's on their radar. The last thing that I raised, and it came out in the meeting here, was a lot of residents would like to see an entrance ramp on Exit 12 North and an exit ramp on Exit 12 South. Not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. I mean, it would be a way to divert some of the traffic. It makes sense. But I've spoken to the people at Department of Transportation, and there's, there's private land there. They're not going to take anybody's land. And there's also a cemetery. So, that is, you know, I, I brought it up. I reminded them about this, but that one is just a solid no. But, we tried. The second thing is that this week has been crazy at the State House, because we have to get all of our bills in by 4 o'clock tomorrow, and all of our cosigners and everything. But I wanted to let you know about one particular piece that I'm submitting. And this is, so I sit on the Science, Technology and Energy. That's the committee I sit on. So, I get people coming to me with renewable energy ideas. And some activists, some young, young people from 350 New Hampshire contacted me, and they wanted the state of New Hampshire to incorporate a more robust climate change education in our public schools. So, I was working with them all summer long. We kept going back and forth, you know, should it be a bill, should it be this, should it be this? In this climate, we're probably not going to get anything like that changed. We're certainly not going to get a mandate, you know? But, they wanted a seat at the table, and they want an opportunity to be heard. So, the solution we came up with was to create a House resolution. Now, a House resolution is an official document, official letter from one governing body to another governing body. And this House resolution would go to Frank Edelblut and the Department of Education, and it simply asks him to consider a more robust climate, climate change education that would include ways people and jobs are part of the solution to slowing the impacts of climate change, local case studies and local solutions happening in New Hampshire, like the Portsmouth Climate Action Plan, the Wind Farm in the Gulf of Maine, and community power, learning how social power works and how it can be part of the solution, learning, solar, not social, solar power, sorry, learning how wind power works and how it can be part of the solution, ways students can make changes in their own schools to be part of the solutions. And this part is what I'm really excited about. Jobs available in the environment and climate sphere of work, including renewable energy jobs, mitigations and adaptations, conservation, advocacy, teaching, sustainability, law, geoscience, engineering, animal science, and agricultural science. So, I'm, I'm working with these, I want to call them kids, but they are not kids. They are young adults. So, if I accidentally call them kids, that's, that's on me. But I'm working with these people, these, these young adults, and they will be presenting this to the Merrimack School Board on December 4th. I think it is, December 4th, we're on, we're on the agenda. And again, it is simply a request to consider. We're not, we're not, you know, shoving this down anyone's throat, but, you know, the youth is very, very concerned about climate change, and they want a seat at the table. And so, this House resolution will do that for them. It also ties in to the Merrimack Energy Committee, which I am also a member of, and you'll be hearing more from, from us later.
Very good.
And it's nice to be back. I haven't been here for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it. Nancy, do you have a...
Just briefly, as Wendy said, tomorrow is our 4 o'clock deadline. And I had eight bills, withdrawn a few based on some recommendations from agencies and timing. And not that they weren't very valid bills, but I'm just concerned about where they would go at this point. And so, I will, at the next meeting, sort of update when everything's final tomorrow, and I'll, I'll fill you in, but that's it.
Excellent. Okay. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amherst Road Bridge over the Salhegan River is now open. Due to weather holding off, and the project was able to finish ahead of schedule, we'd like to thank all the neighbors in that area for their patience during this project. The Salhegan River Trail construction has begun on both sides of Daniel Webster Highway. Groundbreaking ceremony was on November 3rd. Due to safety concerns, please note, the public is not to enter the construction area. There are OSHA regulations to restrict who can go into the construction zones without proper authorization, PPE. Please stay on the sidewalks. Additionally, the gate down to the river has been temporarily closed due to construction. Septic receiving facility at the wastewater treatment facility will be closed Wednesday, November 29th, and Thursday, November 30th. It will reopen on December 1st. The closure is, the closure to the facility is necessary for electrical upgrades related to the ongoing renovation project. Letters and emails have been sent to all haulers that bring septic to the facility. There will be a temporary traffic pattern change, visitors to the facility to encourage, and encourage everyone to follow the posted signs. Merrimack Police Department will be hosting the first small business safety training on December 2nd from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Topics to include: reducing the risk of preventable crimes, improve the safety of small businesses, employees and customers, talk about current trends in local crime, discuss your concerns and share your thoughts with, with our merchants in town. Please RSVP with Detective CSO Vanderside, 603-424-3774, or you can email Detective Vanderside at W-V-A-N-D-E-R-S-Y-D-E@merrimacknh.gov. Earlier today, I attended the ribbon cutting service at the hospice house here in Merrimack. They did a beautiful job with the new addition, that they put several new rooms onto the facility. It was much needed here, for the community and surrounding areas. The place looks beautiful. They're going to renovate the old rooms next. And once that's all done, it will be a fresh, fresh start and looking very, for lack of better words, it was very upbeat facility. It was beautiful colors, beautiful color schemes in the facility. And they just do a great service with, with everything. And honestly, the, one of the speakers, I went up to her afterwards, and I said, "Do you want to come over and be my motivational speaker?" She was a riot, and she told us a story and everything, but it's a great group of people over there that do a great service for the community. Yeah. Nick will be happy that, to know that Merrimack TV is now part of Aruba TV. It's being watched in Aruba, so that's a great feather in Nicholas's cap.
Oh, no. Did you get a text from, did you?
Yes.
That's pitiful. I would not have been watching this meeting if I were in Aruba.
But it's a feather in Nicholas's, Nicholas's hat, that we can actually, with all the upgrades and updates that he has done to our media division, that we can get Aruba and places beyond, I believe. Finally, with the holiday season upon us, I'd like to wish the residents of Merrimack a happy Thanksgiving and a safe and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, onward and upward. Consent agenda. You might as well start coming down here, Don and Leo.
Well, they don't need to for the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, but you don't, okay, you don't have to unless there's a question, so you can have a seat. You're right. I was just assuming there was going to be questions, but I may be wrong. Okay, consent agenda. Consideration of changes to Chapter 167 Stormwater Management Standards, final reading. The town council to consider the final acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 167 Stormwater Management Standards of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article 195.
Madam Chair, the consent agenda usually goes as a single item unless somebody wants to pull something off of it. So, I move the consent agenda as presented, which is both items.
Both items. Okay, so should I read the second one also?
They're on there as part of the consent agenda. You don't need to.
Okay.
But I don't think, unless Paul disagrees.
Okay, I will.
So, I move the consent agenda.
Okay. So, the motion made, see, you got saved, Don. Motion made by Tom Keenig, and seconded by Nancy Murphy. I like the way you think. Okay. Okay, so, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. 6-0-0. The consent agenda in total has passed. Okay, old business. Community choice aggregation... Community Choice Aggregation Program Committee set up discussion. The Town Council to discuss the details of establishing a community choice aggregation program, an optional buying group organized by a municipality or group of municipalities to benefit electric customers as presented and discussed at the December 1, 2022 Town Council meeting. And I know, my question is, I know Paul, we had talked about the legal issues. We were going to get some feedback, so I'll let you start.
Yes, Bart, you can come down. Yeah, I talked to our legal, legal advisors and they advised me that the Town Council has, can have authority to establish the committee, make their charge for that committee. The committee in turn then would come back to the Town Council with a program. And then the Town Council would either decide to move that program forward to a vote on the April ballot. So looking at probably, if this goes through tonight, it would be an April 2025 ballot question to the residents.
It's too fast to get it done for this.
Yeah.
Why, why is it too fast?
Can you? They can explain that better than I can.
Well, that's a great thing to get an answer for. Thank you.
Yes, but what will happen is that once the, if this goes forwards and the committee is formed, then they bring something forward. The council then has to put it on the ballot for the residents to vote. And once the residents vote yea, move forward, nay, it dies. And then we move forward with, with every decision the residents vote on. And without further ado, Bart is here from Freedom Energy. He's one of our providers that we work closely with in the town for our natural gas and electrical needs. And he'll introduce his panel.
Sure. Thank you to the Town Council for having me. Thank you to the Town Council for having us back. It's been almost a year since the last time we appeared before you. Been a lot of change in the community choice, community power marketplace since that point in time. We've had some legislation that's passed. I know there's a few new town councillors. Nice to meet you. And if you'd like, I could go through a little bit of a history of the program, just what it is, what it does, and then kind of get into the, the discussion. Sure. So community choice aggregation or community power is a program that essentially bundles the collective buying power of a town's residents. The program is essentially activated and authorized by the Town Council, the, the town's governing body. And what you're essentially enabling your residents to do is have the joint buying power of a large commercial, large industrial end user. So they get better rates, better contract terms than they would otherwise as a single residence or a small commercial operation, like a pizza shop or a laundromat. These programs are prevalent throughout the rest of the country, Massachusetts, Ohio, California, New York. Stuart Ormsby is, is our partner from Colonial Power Group. We partnered with them back in 2021. The reason being is that we got the legislation passed here in New Hampshire, but we had no one with any experience bringing these aggregations into production. And so Stuart and his team down at Colonial Power in Massachusetts operate 90 such aggregations, including the city of Boston, which is the largest aggregation in the Northeast. So now we've had opt-in aggregations here in the state. This forms, this functions as an opt-out. And what that means is that as the Town Council, you have the ability to authorize a program in which opt-out notices are sent to each one of your residents that have a rate and a term that competes with the Eversource standard offer. It's only offered on an opt-out basis to those customers that are on Eversource's basic offering or supplier of last resort service. Anybody or any company, including the town itself, that's on a third-party supply contract already, would not be offered an opt-out notice. They would have to opt in. They have to make an affirmative decision to leave their current contractual situation to join Merrimack Community Aggregation. Once the notices are sent out for the opt-outs, your residents or your ratepayers would have 30 days to return the opt-out card and say, no, thank you. If they take no action, they'll be automatically swept into the program. The reason that the legislature put this in place is because of the high cost of customer acquisition for these programs. So we have had opt-in programs in the past, but they've had very, very little adoption. One of the things that you'll come across potentially from your residents is concern about, why is the Town Council telling me what I should do for my home or my business in terms of buying that way? And the way that I, I go and try to create an example is when you move to Merrimack, you build a house, you buy a house, you're automatically grabbed into the Eversource portfolio, become an automatic Eversource customer. So all you're really doing with this program is replacing Eversource as the standard offer provider for Merrimack with Merrimack Community Power, Community Aggregation becomes the new default provider for your community. And this gives you significant leverage and decision-making authority over the type of products, term lengths, and so on and so forth, that you'd like to see your community get involved in. Some of our communities opt for higher amounts of renewable electricity. Some of our communities opt for maximize savings and some of our communities come out somewhere in the middle. But the point being is through our program at Freedom Energy and Colonial Power Group, you have the ability as Merrimack to make a decision for Merrimack and what you think best meets the needs of your ratepayers here in this community. Once someone is in the program, if they'd like to leave, it operates similar to Eversource and you can leave at any time on your next meter read date. So let's say that someone's in Aruba, watching this meeting right now, and they don't get the notice because they're not here. Once they get back from their vacation, if they say, hey, I didn't sign up for Merrimack Community Aggregation, I'd like to get out, they simply call your consultant, which would hopefully be us, or they call Eversource. They can go onto the website, which we would provide for you, and they can opt out of the program and go back to Eversource's standard offer and there'd be no termination fee. So even if Merrimack decided to go for a three-year electricity agreement, your actual residents would be beholden to as little or as long as they would want for that. And we found especially in these very volatile times, the electricity markets where Eversource was at 22 cents a kilowatt hour this past winter, that these programs give long-term rate stability. Now, it's not a guaranteed savings plan and I want to make sure I'm clear on that. Eversource, just by virtue of the regulation and their tariff in this state, goes out to procure electricity every six months. So that means that a little alarm clock goes off in someone's office in September, in February, and it's time to buy. And they're completely agnostic to what the market's doing at that point in time. So over the long term, someone that's being more opportunistic in terms of their buying patterns and watching the ebb and flow of the marketplace is going to do better than Eversource likely will with their essentially, you know, you know, alarm going off and just buying whatever the market's doing at a given time. And so we've seen this in Massachusetts with significant savings with utilities there going as high as 36 cents a kilowatt hour. And then communities in our program there are paying nine, 10, 11 cents a kilowatt hour. So it gives some nice rate stability and there is generally savings over the long term, so.
And Bart, that's just on the
Supply portion.
Supply portion, not the distribution. Distribution would still be?
That would still be handled through Eversource. The billing mechanism through our program is still through Eversource. So there's no behavioral changes on behalf of your residents here in Merrimack. There would simply be a one-line item on the Eversource invoice that would have the Merrimack Community Aggregation rate. Other than that, if there's an outage at your home or a meter issue or wires down, you still have the same relationship with Eversource that you did prior to Merrimack Community Aggregation.
Andy, you have a question?
Your default comment, I just came to that conclusion a little bit earlier this evening because one of the major things that I came away with last year when you were here is, I don't know if it's my place to go tell somebody that, you know, we're going to change their power supplier. But as I was thinking about it earlier, there's a default. I'm an Eversource customer. I just defaulted to Eversource and I've never changed it. All we're doing is changing the default, but you can still go to any place you want. And so I reconciled that in my mind earlier tonight and you explained it very well. So I, I thank you for that. The one question I do have is do we know the percentage of Merrimack residents that are Eversource customers that would automatically be opting to this? Do we have any idea what that population is?
So I don't have the exact numbers. That's something we could request from Eversource if you want to specify data. However, the averages for the residential rate class in New Hampshire, it's about 80% that are buying from Eversource. Only about 20% are buying, buying from third-party private supply. And one of the big concerns there and another, I think, key component or key benefit to the program is that when you go buy from your home, you're buying from NRG or North American Power, sometimes you get teaser rates or gift cards and you sign up for the program, you get a great rate for three months or six months. But you're taking kids to soccer camp, you're traveling, other things in life take precedent and you stop paying attention. Next thing you know, you come back and the rates doubled and you've given back all of your savings because the contract lapsed. One of the key features of this program is that by working through an aggregation, the Town Council gets to dictate the terms to the supplier. So you get to put in key terms that ensure that there is no holdover rate. Once the contract expires, we either have a renewal contract in place or we send the rate base back to Eversource if that's more advantageous at that point in time.
And then I guess to Tom's earlier question, is there a reason why we can't get this on the ballot in '24?
It's so, so kind of working backwards, timing-wise, as, as Paul explained, the, this, we need to go to town meeting in April. And so there's some statutory requirements that need to take place in advance of that. So the council would have to establish an energy committee. We'd work with a committee to put a plan together. Now, that's actually not terribly complicated. We have plans and we've worked through the utility commission already. It's been vetted, so that's pretty easy. The plan needs to be prepared and then there has to be two public hearings held. And then once those public hearings are held, then the council can make a decision whether or not it wants to put it to warrant. So it's a matter of here we are in the middle of November. Is there time to do everything I described and, and, and make affirmative vote to put it on the town ballot?
And we have to back it back a month because we're SB2 and we still have deliberative session. Everything has to be done by the second Wednesday of March to have it on the warrant. And actually
So have we backplanned that and it's just impossible? Is that what we're saying? Or we're just saying it's a lot of work?
It, it's almost because you have a 30-day, you're, now you can waive your policy for committees, but usually you have a 30-day committee appointment, advertisement to people to see who's interested. Then you have a committee appointment. So if you, even if you shorten that up, you're talking December 15th, 15 days, talking December 15th before you can get the committee moving. That gives you Christmas holidays. You're looking at, starting maybe after the new year, January, that's a month before everything really has to get moving because now you have to have two public hearings. That's your month of February. So you, you got
We got the second Wednesday of March though, right? We're only into February.
But you also, there's other, I have to have
Let me ask the question a different way. Is this something that we could start down this road? And if we don't accomplish certain milestones in certain timelines, then we call it off and push it to '25?
100%. We can, you can push as hard as you want to get it through. Like they said, they have these plans already in place that have been already approved from surrounding communities. You can try, we can try to get it on '24. I'm not saying not, but more realistically, it looks like '25.
Yeah, and I don't know what the feeling of the rest of the council is, but the one thing that goes in my mind, you know, we just sent out a, a tax increase to the entire town that is substantial. And if we have a, an option that maybe we could go say some folks some money on energy, I, I just don't want to put it into too, too hard to do category without giving it a try.
No, we could, we could always move it forward as quick as possible. It's just, you know, just knowing where we have to stand. We, we have to have our date. If we're not, like everything else, if, if we're not 90% done by June 20th, you know, I don't know if we can get it across the finish line in time. So, but we, we can definitely, if, if the council wants to go this way, we can definitely try. We can get the announcement out tomorrow. We, we can shorten the amount of time if, if that's how the council wants to have the committee appointed by the 17th of December, which is the second meeting in December, and then hit the ground running with them.
Applicants would have to be interviewed and be
Prior to December 17th.
I don't disagree with your motivation and your intention. My only concern is when I, my concern is that anything that gets rushed, automatically you're going to miss something. Or the odds are increased that you're not really providing due diligence somewhere along the way. So that's my only concern. Maybe that's not a concern of anyone else.
It's probably a valid concern. I mean, I don't discount it.
Very valid concern. And if you don't mind my jump ahead of you. I, I'm just concerned that we've been talking about this now for a couple of years and haven't made any progress at all. And I'd like to see it go forward. I'm currently buying power from one of the companies he mentioned as opposed to Eversource. And so I'm, I'm very aware of the value of being able to do this program and, and convinced that the aggregate program that you're talking about would actually be a very good program because I don't keep tabs on that contract that I have personally because I'm busy doing things, as you pointed out, Bart. And to, to have a committee in Merrimack that would look over that and a company backing us up and potentially saving us a few cents per kilowatt hour would be great, given the rates that are, we have here in New England. Is it a guarantee? No, there'll be times when it might not be, but it, over the longer term, it's shown that it's definitely a valuable thing to do. And so I'd, I'd be more than happy to put whatever energy I can into making sure this moves forward as fast as possible. Thank you.
Barbara, did you have a?
Yeah, I guess it sounds to me like we're putting the cock before the horse because it's got to go to the voters. So it goes to the voters as a question on whether do you want the town to pursue this? Then you form the committee to work out the guide. Do you think so?
No, it's the plan.
Just because of the statute.
Knowing how difficult it is to get anyone in this town, except, you know, people who have a particular interest in a particular area, to volunteer for anything, we may not be able to get a committee together.
But I think we have some people of interest coincidentally. But I understand, my, my understanding is that's not a choice. It's part of the legislation you have to have.
Correct. Unfortunately, as a result of the statute, it, it, it puts the cart before the horse, as you said.
One thing, if I may, I mean, one thing that may be helpful, the, the, the good thing is you're really not making any commitments. In other words, the, we're following sort of a statutory process in terms of, you know, a, a plan and so forth. I guess one thing to note is the plan itself is really written, or at least our plan, it's written to meet the statutory requirements. And we intentionally write it broadly. So in other words, things about operational decisions, what kind of products does a town want to, you know, the contract terms, that, that's later. So you, you had, you raised a concern about, well, we don't want to rush and make mistakes. This is really sort of a high-level constitutional, it's a master plan, if you will. And so, and again, 90% of it is, is checking the box on statutory requirements.
So a lot of it's already been vetted?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the committee really is the purpose of what would be the charge of the committee then?
Well, it's, it's, it's to, to work with, with us. If you decide to work with us, to, to make sure that, that there's town involvement, to make sure they understand, you know, the components of the plan. You know, assist us with the two public hearings that have to take place. At those hearings, you know, we will come and make, you know, a brief presentation, similar to what you've already heard a couple of times now, to any interested residents and businesses, what this is all about. And again, if the town will take a vote, but even after the, the town is voting, yes, we like this concept, we want to move forward. But of course, nothing's going to happen unless it's actually advantageous for, for ratepayers. I mean, it's, it's possible that come out the other side of this. And if, if we can't work with suppliers to get rates that are much better than Eversource's, you won't launch. And there's, so there's no commitment, you know, there's sort of no bad decisions for, for a long time.
So I guess I'm more confused now then. Anyone else or is it just me? Okay, so let's say we establish a committee, the committee comes back, gives us recommendations and whatever. Then we say, we meet the deadlines for everything. We have the two public hearings. It goes before the, the town says yes.
Yep.
You're saying it's, that doesn't necessarily mean it's automatic.
It just means that statutorily, you're, you're street legal to proceed if you'd like to. You have the option now.
So at this point, the Town Council will have to make decisions about specific contracts?
So the only, there's, there's a, there's, there's one contractual decision you make early on. And that is which consultant you'd like to work with. And there is competition in this space. So you choose a consultant to work with and that's, that's really the first decision that this council makes.
Gotcha.
You also can form your committee, some
Afterwards.
After you do that, with that, however you'd like to, that's, that's part of your prerogative. Then the second time that this, this Then the second time that this, this body makes the decision and you can make, have a designee, you could say, we'd like Paul to be our designee for these, these contracts and make decisions. Is when your consultant then presents you with options after they've gone to market, bundled options from suppliers, similar like what I work with with Paul, when we go out for the town's campus load, if you will. Give him four or five options, he makes the decision that has the best contractual terms, best pricing. And then you sign on the dotted line and, and that's really the contractual responsibility ends for the town council at that point in time until the next contract comes due to consider. So from that standpoint, it operates very similar to what this town already does for its third party supply decisions for public safety complex, this town hall, but now you're doing it for a much larger customer load. And you're similar to the mechanism that Paul uses, you're choosing a consultant to help guide you in those decisions and give you market signals as to when the best time to proceed is. But you could come out of the other end, as Stuart said, in March or April, you got the affirmative vote from your community and.
To continue with the discussion, which makes me feel better. Cause it, cause it's not a commitment at that point.
And, and in my opinion, even before that, if we get to December, if we get to January, and we feel like we've rushed this and
We can always stop, yeah.
We can just put the brakes on.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. And I think it's really important, as Bart said, we're not actually buying a new electric contract until after we're approved to do so.
That's, that's what makes me feel better.
In the worst case, that all of the offers from, from different companies come in higher than ever source, we just stay with ever source.
Correct.
Until such time as we can get a contract offer that's better. And then we could run and switch at that point, once we're approved, once we have a plan in place. But I, it's also important to understand that the town government, the town government, the town of Merrimack government, if you will, already uses a third party supplier. And they're bigger than any one individual households. And so they're already doing a, a smaller portion of what we're talking about doing here. Which is saving the town money right now. At least a part of our electric bill, not the, not the supply part, not the transmission part. But actually the, the electricity itself comes from a third party supplier.
How much time does a committee usually need in order to be prepared to?
Every town's different, you know, it really is. Some, some towns go into it knowing exactly that the council knows what they want. They say, I want to maximize renewables. I want to maximize savings. And they give a mandate to the committee as to how they like the, the plan to come back to them.
And so that kind of information would be put on the warrant?
The, the warrant article would essentially say, do you authorize us as Merrimack to go forward?
But the decision yet trying to okay, happens after the vote. The combination.
You could do that before. If you wanted to give the committee a mandate and say, this is what we as a town council would see come back to us in our plan, you can do that. Some communities go and say, you know, we're going to let the energy committee make those decisions and we're going to sit back and wait, you know, to hear what they have to say. So it depends upon how much control the town council would like over the process.
But even when they come back, again, I'm just asking questions for clarity. Even if they come back and say, we would recommend da, 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 da. The town council will make a determination, what kind of warrant? What's the wording in the warrant article? It can be specific with details or more generalized, so that decisions like that can be made after.
Absolutely. The only thing that you have to decide before the warrant article, and correct if I'm wrong, is you have to approve the plan to get to the warrant article. So the plan that's submitted to you, you have the ability to vote it up or vote it down and then send them back to do more work if you want to. But if you voted up, that would be the proper step before you can go forward with the warrant article.
Gotcha.
So a couple of other things to consider as well. Bart, a couple of questions because these have been asked to me.
Sure.
Opt in, opt out, opt in, opt out. You can do it 9,000 times if you want.
Correct.
Okay. So there's no limit.
There's no limit. Under, under current statute.
On the current statute. One, one foot, no, a number of communities in, in this, this may be applicable from Merrimack too, is really these programs, we think are best designed to, to help out those consumers that, that have sort of limited quality choices, residential, small, commercial. Your, your large commercial enterprises in town, they've been out in the market for decades now. They have lots of options, better options, quite honestly. So, so some of the contract provisions we would recommend is some limits on the large CNI customers to, so that they don't come in and out because it, it tends to be detrimental to everybody else. If these big lows are coming and going.
Correct.
So, so it would be like residential only or residential and small, small, small commercial.
LGGV class would be into a separate product. So you'd say, all right, you can come in LGGV because it is a universal access program. I mean, you can't turn any ratepayer away, but you can put certain rate classes into certain products. So you say, if you're a large user, you have to go to a market based product. And the reason that helps your residential and your small commercial is it doesn't raise the risk premiums built into the supply price to serve them. If I'm a large supplier and I'm worried about a, a huge manufacturer coming in and out of the program when it, it suits them, I'm going to put heavy risk premiums into the program cost. Therefore it makes sense to segment the larger users into a different product that doesn't impact that.
And, you know, across the way there, another town across the river did this. They, once they have the plan approved and once the the, they go forward and the council moves it forward and the people vote yes, say, does it have to go to the regulatory commission to get them to approve it as well?
You're, yeah. Yeah, that's correct. So after the things, because we didn't touch on that. So if, if it's approved at town meeting, the next step, as, as you said, Paul, it goes, the plan is filed with the Public Utilities Commission. And they'll review and approve. And the statute requires that they accomplish that review process inside of two months, which they've been doing very well. And again, what, what we'd be presenting to town is a plan that's already been through that process a couple of times now. So.
All right. And knowing some of the cities and communities that have done this, I know Lebanon has done this. I believe you were involved with Lebanon.
Just as their procurement, not, not on the aggregation.
Not on the aggregation, okay. But they, they were more heavily into renewables. From what I understand that through their plan.
Yeah, they, they, they and Hanover, also another procurement client of mine, but again, not involved in the aggregation. They formed, were the, were the two of the first in the Community Power Coalition. So that's another grouping that's a competitor to ours. And that's more of a regional buying group. So they get together with a number of other towns and then make decisions through this collective in terms of the products and services that they're going to offer to their communities. A big part of that is yes, the renewable inclusion. So if you join the coalition, there's a certain threshold that, you know, each community is going to have to have in their base rate. And they have the same product across all communities. And they're weighted in terms of their voting rights based upon their size. So one of the things that, you know, kind of our product as a differentiator is we're, we specialize in a local control product. Again, they're more of a regional buying group. So you're giving up some of your autonomy as a result of joining the coalition. Because Nashua and Concord and Portsmouth could out though Merrimack and Hudson and others in terms of the directions you wanted to go in. So.
Thank you. So I guess the decision tonight in front of the council is, is do you want to move forward with this establishing a committee to work on this plan? And then a sidebar is, is that if you want to go in a different direction and not use the Bart and, and his firm for this, then we have to bring other firms in, start interviewing. And I can tell you right now, if we have to do that, if the council wants to do it, we'll never meet the March deadline date or, or the, for, for 2024. Because that's going to take some time to bring people in and have them discuss this. So that's another concern of the council is that do you want to move with what you heard? First of all, do you want to move this way? And do you want to move with the group that's in front of you tonight? Or do you want me to go out and procure and do a bid for somebody to help us with the plans?
So Paul, are you current, is the town currently working with this group?
I am working with, with Freedom Energy for Natural Gas and Electric.
And we're also in group, group net metering.
Yes, we're in the hydro, they'll use them for hydro as well. I want to say I started with Freedom back when Keith was here. So it's over.
2010, 2009?
Nine, nine, 10. So I've been with, with, with them and, and it's been a, a very good relationship. They have saved the town significant amount of money over those years. We, we lock in a long-term contracts when we can. Is it the lowest amount that we're paying per kilowatt? No. But they are always looking out for us. If I have a question, like tonight we talked beforehand and I'm like, should we start looking at natural gas since oil's down now? Is this the time to do it? And he's like, well, we could always go out to market and see what you can get. And either you take it or you don't. So it isn't like, hey, stop wasting my time, you're not doing it. So we've always had that kind of relationship and, and worked together on, on a lot of different things. And, and right now with hydro, another thing they've just brought forward just last week is they are now doing solar, community solar. And it's similar to the hydro product. They're starting to look at community solar products that they're bringing forward and we're looking into that too. So we are looking into renewable, investing in renewable energy. Where it is, all I have to do is give them one of my bills. And that, with the way the law is written is they're allowed to offset my kilowatt usage in that product line. So if, if for instance, wastewater has a million kilowatt per year, they're allowed to take some of that and put that into hydro. Now, hydro can produce up to X amount of kilowatts per year based on that. So there are a lot of these programs that we are working with them on this and we have a working relationship. I know that is a little more confusing and in, in a 30 second display, we can get into everything else that we do with hydro and, and looking at the solar and things of that sort. But I just wanted to show you that they, they do look out for renewable energy and it isn't just, okay, let's do a grab, get their, get their business and walk away. And when it's time to renew, come back and say, here you go, these are your rates, take them or leave them. And there are several times that we've gone out to bid and it's like, no. No, it doesn't make sense. So.
Barbara, you had a question.
So do we need two motions? One to say that we are doing the community aggregation, community choice aggregation program? With freedom, do we have to say that specifically? Or do we, is it more generic?
You do the first one would be town council scout, let me think of how I would work this.
Vote to establish a committee?
Committee, town council votes to establish a media, committee on community choice aggregation.
And to make recommendations to the council?
And yes, and to make recommendations to council, town council to use the committee appointment policy to have a by whatever date in December. Applications do, interested parties should send resume and cover letter to town manager's office. Pick a date in December.
Did you get all that?
Are you done? Is that it?
Some town manager can.
Yeah.
Yeah, sign anything.
Do we have, but do we have to make decisions about numbers on the committee?
Yeah. How many on the committee is, do we have to give direction to the committee on? You know, what is in the plan as far as percentages of
We'd have to have a minimum of.
Solar alternatives versus.
What's your history here?
Well, so, so you can do that. I mean, my, if I may, my recommendation is, is you don't get terribly prescriptive. It's because you, you want to preserve flexibility on behalf of the town going forward and not sort of commit yourself to any kind of product because the markets always change.
Well, I was going to say renewables may be more expensive during a certain time period than standard, whatever.
Right.
Those decisions can be made after.
That's right. And, and changing all the time.
Yep.
So Londonderry.
Yep.
All right, let's just use them. They've done this. Well, how many people did they have on their committee?
So London is a bad example because they went through so much flux after Kevin left and then Mike Malagui came in as the town manager. So it had started as just four people on the original energy committee. And that was two members of staff and then two members of the public that, that they put together. Then after Kevin left, they put together a, a full fledged utility committee. And then that went away and they brought in a new committee. So I think Hampton is probably the most apt example. Hampton put simply five people on the committee, handpicked by the council. And again, it was members of staff and I think one or two members of the public.
So five to seven members would be what, what you would be looking at. Probably a town counselor, myself, one of my staff members. And then three or four people from the, the public, always making sure maybe two member, two counselors, if, if you wanted that to have an odd number.
Yeah, I was thinking two counselors, yourself and two members from the public.
Yeah. So that's five, five to seven.
And you're one of the town councils.
I'm signing up. Yep.
Okay. So the establishment of a committee and putting the numbers in membership like designation. And also we'd have to shorten the appointment.
Period. To, I would say if you do next week's Thanksgiving.
We could have a due date.
Interested parties, interested parties have their cover letter and resume or a cover letter and a letter of interest to the town manager by Friday, December 8th. We can do appointments the next week and have them ready for the 21st meeting to appoint the committee, be able to give the committee a charge and we can hit the ground running.
January.
And then we can, we can hit the ground running.
Yep.
And then in the meantime, we can be looking at backing off from the due date to get on the warrant when the public hearings would have to be done by.
We, we can, I can, if you move forward with that recommendation, I can start next week, starting to put a calendar in place that these are our key dates that we would have to hit.
This often in, in order to come up with an answer by the end of January or something.
Correct.
Okay. So we need to spell out, to get all that Barbara?
He was going to be so moved. What he said.
So, so, all right, here goes. Town council to establish a community choice aggregation program committee. Interested part, interested members of the public, please provide a cover letter or a letter of interest and a resume to the town manager's office by December 8th.
The configuration of the committee will be two counselors, one staff person, meaning you and three members, I think two members of the public.
Two members of the public for a total of five members on the committee.
That, that's the motion that Barbara made, right?
Yes.
And seconded by.
Kenzie seconded.
That was a really good motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
That makes sense. So that's really the all we, that's the only motion we really need, right? Cause we're establishing the committee.
You're establishing, that's that committee there that, yes, that's the motion to get the program rolling down the river.
Okay. Well, let's make a vote on that before. Okay, we have a motion and it has to do with the committee and the configuration and due dates and all that. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. All those in favor of that confusing? It's not confusing. It makes sense. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
It's, okay. Any in opposed? All agreed, 600. Do we need any other motions for it?
The, the other motion is to allow the town manager to procure Freedom, Freedom Logistics to help in this process.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion made by Tom Kenny, second by Barbara Healy. Very good. Any other discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 600.
Do we want to appoint town council members at this point or?
As you do have another member who's not here that.
I'm sure he wants to volunteer.
He's busy on the highway committee.
Yeah.
And the town senate committee.
Yeah. So, but no, if you.
I'd like to volunteer.
I know.
And I'll just leave it at that. If, if anybody else is interested, we'll, we'll work it out.
I'll throw my name.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tom Kenny, getting into enter to this committee, to the aggregation committee. You take a commitment while you're at it. Okay. So I made the motion and seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, seated. Okay, motion six, zero, zero.
We'll get the, we'll get the announcement out also. Uh, we'll do a press release tomorrow to get the announcement out. And, uh.
Perfect. So we're gonna give it a good shot. I think actually.
I think it's with the cost of electrical nowadays, I think this is a, a good opportunity for folks to have an alternative to ever source or any of the other companies out there.
And the alternative's always been there, but it's difficult individually to go out and find a company that you want to sign up for. So I think this opportunity of an opt-out, which they can opt out very easily by just signing the card if they're, if they really don't want to save along with the rest of their community. Uh, or if they have a better option somewhere else, which is a possibility as well. Myself, I'd have to opt in, as you just pointed out, because I'm already on a different program than ever source.
I would too.
So I think, I think it's a good opportunity for the community. And I, part of our task in the next couple of months is going to be to sell that opportunity. So that we can get a positive vote.
Excellent, thank you gentlemen.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Did you want to have a question Wendy? I'll, I'll allow it.
Yeah, over there.
So again, Wendy Thomas, I'm one of the state reps. This is without doubt one of the directions that we need to do. It's going to save money, it's going to save electricity, it's going to save essentially power. We recent, my concern is that you're, you may not be looking at all of the options out there. We, the, the energy committee recently had a presentation by Community Power Coalition. And there are differences between that corp, that group and this group. The biggest one being that they're nonprofit. And so they, when, that, when they get money, they reinvest it into, um, energy projects. The other thing that, that they, uh, talked to us about was that a town could set the rate. So if, if the rate was, let's say 11, 11.6 cents or something like that, the town could put it 11.7 cents. And then they, the town gets that money and, and you can use it within the town for energy projects. They, what, what town did they say? It was a, what, I forget what town, it's a third the size of Merrimack. And the town did this by raising it like a point, a fraction. And they got over a hundred thousand dollars to the town for energy projects. We need things like, you know, um, EV charging stations, we need solar, you know, farms and everything. This may be the way to go, but don't lock into it right now. Make sure that you see what's out there. Have a presentation by Community Power Coalition. Just hear what they have to say and how they differ from this approach. Thank you.
Did you have a question Nancy?
I do. Is, is that something that the committee could request? So that this, uh, like this group that Wendy's suggesting could come to the committee?
Be part of the recommendation.
Right. Just so that all the information is out there for the public and for us, before we make any decision.
I think that's the committee law.
Right, okay. Okay. All set, thank you.
Just want to respond real quick, uh, to Representative Thomas. Again, there's, there's nothing stopping you from Merrimack community aggregation, from placing an additional energy services charge on, on top of your base rate. That's something we can easily accommodate.
Contract.
You know, it, it's, it's something available to you to make your own decision. There's nothing stopping you if you were to go with us to, to enact that, if that's what your community wanted to do.
I understand, okay. Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll be busy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
But two members will be busy. Well. Infra. I'll make sure the interviews are done quickly. Okay. Okay, new business number one, proposed changes to summer camp refund policy. The town council to consider the acceptance of the proposed changes to the summer camp refund policy. Hi Matt.
Hey again, I think I'm gonna start bringing cookies or something. I've always, at the end of the night, we need a little bit of sugar, so.
So, so Matt, Matt came to me, oh, two months ago, after summer camp ended and said, Paul, we need to do something. Um, our current policy does not meet the needs of our day camp. People, we're calling people with 10 days before they're supposed to show up. Their kids are supposed to show up and they're like, oh, keep my $25, uh, we're not coming to camp. And we've hired staff, we've brought it, we bought food. And all of a sudden now we're losing out on that camp revenue. And we're scrambling to try to get kids off the waitlist saying, hey, do you still need a place to go? And, and 95% of the time, they're not there. So I asked Matt to look at it and provide, he's gonna provide you tonight what, um, he believes is a good cancellation policy for the camp.
Thank you. You know, I, I sometimes, I'd, I'd like to revert back to history a little bit sometimes. You know, again, this is year 10 for me. And, you know, when I first got here, we used to, you, you know, that first summer, the first three, four, or five years, you know, we'd have people, we never felt used to fill camp when I first got here. And we'd have people on Friday afternoon or even sometimes on Monday morning saying, can I register for this week? And we'd take them because we had plenty of spaces in, in the staffing and, and, and whatever. And in the last probably four, four or five years, we've, every year we've been filling. Over and, you know, getting higher and higher and filling sooner and sooner. In 22, summer 22, we had our highest enrollment ever, which was 1,049 total registrations. And, and up from about seven and a quarter of my first year here. And then this past year, this past summer, we hit 1304. So a 20% increase from last year to this year. And we opened up, we always open up camp registration usually in mid-January. And within two weeks, we were basically 90% full already. And probably by the first week of February, we were sold out for the summer. I had waitlists basically on every age group. And, um, obviously we're hiring staff and, you know, all through the spring, I've got this big waitlist. Let's try to bring in some more staff so I can take some of these kids off the waitlist. Our current refund policy is basically 10 days notice, um, of a session. They, and they only lose $10. And so what's been happening in the last couple of years is parents go, oh, you're filling up quicker and quicker, so I'm just gonna register for all nine weeks. And then we get to week, you know, two weeks out of that first week of summer, you know, second week of June. And they go, well, I'm gonna keep week one, but we've decided we're going here and we're going on vacation. And so I'm gonna cancel weeks two through seven and we'll be back for week eight and nine. And now it's mid-June and we're trying to call our, you know, 40 people on the waitlist for each age group. And they go, well, it's June, we've already found other arrangements because you were full. And, you know, some slots we filled and a lot we didn't. And so over the course of this past summer, we probably lost about $20,000 in revenues that we would have had, had people not done this. And so, you know, we look at, so this past year, you know, Camp Nanakook caught, Camp Nanakook cost us, you know, it was $290 a week. And so we were getting $10 from that once, from that one week. And Camp Trek was 340, so again, we're only getting $10. And, and so it's like, you know, it's just a, again, staff's hired, foods, food and supplies are bought. You know, we're kind of stuck at that point. The other issue that, that's come up the last two years really is, you know, we've had instances where, you know, kid's registered, he's got all his forms in and then just doesn't show up. And, you know, whenever anybody doesn't show up, we call and we call every single day and doing, oh, he's, you know, whatever. And, and sometimes they'll say, oh, my kid's sick. And, you know, for, for medical cancellations, we've always asked for a doctor's note. Just says, okay, he's too sick to come or he broke his arm, so he can't walk up and down the hill at Wasserman Park or, you know, whatever it is. And that's been fine, but we've had cases, we had a couple of cases this year where, you know, we go through, we make our calls, they don't respond. The next week, you know, they go, oh, I need a refund. Well, where's your doctor? And I was like, well, he wasn't sick enough that we had to go to the doctor, but we still want all our money back. And, you know, we had one case where, you know, he's in our, in our travel camp. Now, we've already paid for his tuition, his admissions fee. Our, our team camp is the one that goes on our field trips every day. So now we've just paid a hundred dollars worth of admission fees already because he didn't show up every day and we didn't know he wasn't coming. And we had one case this year where, um, the, about three weeks after summer was over, suddenly the ma, the, the parent that said, oh, he's too sick to come to camp, but not sick enough to go to the doctor, suddenly magically appeared with a doctor's note, that the doctor kind of predated back to, you know, it's like, really? And, and, and we granted it, but it was like, you know. And, and so, and so I'm here tonight because camp registration, believe it or not, opens up in about seven weeks, which isn't a whole heck of a lot of time. And so we're looking to tighten things up a little bit here. And, and as I, as Paul said, this, this is, these changes apply just for summer camp. You know, our, our 10 days and $10 for the rest of our programs really is fine. It, it's really never been an issue. And it's really an issue at camp because we've been filling and filling earlier and earlier every summer. And so what we're looking to do here is first of all, right now, we, we, when parents register their kids for camp, it's $25 per week, um, that, for every week that they want to register. It's a deposit with the final payments due, again, 10 days out in advance. We, so we want to change that from 25 to 50. Just a little bit more skin in the game, so parents hopefully aren't gonna, you know, you know, want to lose that, that money per se. And, and it's a non-refundable deposit. Secondly, instead of 10 days out, what we're looking at is a four to 45 days before camp. Is what, 45 days is when we want payments in full instead of 10 days. Then we'll allow up to 30 days before that session if they decide they need to cancel. We'll still give them a refund at, up to, you know, up to day 31, um, minus that $50 deposit. But they could still get their refund at that point. 15, between 15 and 30 days, they could get a 50% refund minus the $50 deposit for that session. And then, um, and then after, obviously less than 15 days, we're not gonna do refunds. And again, this just kind of protects us a little better. Um, and hopefully kind of discourages people from taking up all the slots and then deciding to cancel last minute on us. Now, in talking about the medical situation, the 30-day deadline would not include medical situations. But what we would be looking at is we still want a doctor's note, but it's a 50% deposit back or 50% of their, of their payment back with the doctor's note instead of the all but 10.
Matt?
Yes.
The only thing I'd noticed is you didn't have a time limit on that. Like a note has to be received within a certain time. Cause you're gonna, the situation you brought up.
Yeah.
And it's not unreasonable to have an expectation that a physician's note needs to be submitted by.
Okay.
Not two weeks later.
Right.
I mean, if they're sacked.
Maybe submitted by the first day of the, or? End of the first week, yeah.
If he's not feeling good on, or she is not feeling good on Monday or Tuesday, the mother might be, oh, well, maybe it's not, but then they go to the doctor on Wednesday or?
Yeah.
And here's the note.
Right.
Kind of deal.
And it's, and that's not unreasonable.
Yep. And, and then just as.
And you can always make decisions if there's something, I mean, clearly, if someone were in a car accident, is catastrophic.
Extenuating.
Those are decisions you can make on individual basis.
And then obviously if we, you know, we have a COVID, you know, we can certainly suspend those rules at that time, which we would do in consultation with you. If, hopefully we never have to deal with that again, but, um, but yes, um, and so that's basically the basis. It's kind of almost like the cruise ship mentality. It's kind of, here's a 45 days for payments, again, 30 days for the refund, down to 15, that, that payment goes down, um, or that refund amount goes down. And again, hopefully this kind of solves some of those problems.
And you made a comment that this is similar to other refund?
Yes.
Policies for other camps.
And we've, and when we've talked to other camps and, and they're, they're doing similar things. I mean, I know some camps, um, camp, uh, Melody Pines in Manchester, which is, runs a phenomenal program. But they, uh, and they're a camp that literally fills up on day, within day one, hour one, every single year. And so we talk to them a lot and they, um, they're like, May 1st, payment in full, no refunds at that and, and they get it, you know, but, you know, we don't, we don't need to be that strict. But it's, you know, you know, little, it gives us a little bit more breathing room.
Any questions, Tom?
So I noticed that you, you crossed out the line that talks about canceled, uh, courses due to low enrollment. That refunds would be given. If we cancel the program, we can't keep their money.
Yeah, no, 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 that, that was remnants of the original kind of overall town-wide, um, refund policy, obviously if we cancel camp, as we did in 2020, then yes, we would be giving everything back.
So it says that somewhere?
This, this statement, aside from a COVID-type situation, I wouldn't anticipate it needing to cancel camp. I mean, but.
I wouldn't either, but, but since you, I mean, you, you lined it out so it wouldn't show up. But since it's showing up at the moment lined out, it looks really bizarre that we would even contemplate not refunding if we canceled the program.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we would, it was, it was because it was remnants of the other, um.
But you're suggesting to keep it.
Well, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
I agree with you.
I guess either keep it or, or make sure it doesn't show up at all.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, if, if it's, if this is approved, obviously we would take out the, you know, update this policy.
I understand, but it still seems like we ought to have a note in there that if.
If camp is canceled, yeah.
Yeah, if, if, if the town cancels a pro, the camp or the pro, a program or camp, then due to a full refund will be given.
Yeah. And, and.
If it's on us.
Lack of enrollment is gonna be a problem with, with summer camp. Again, it's, that was more of an issue with.
With, with the team truck or something?
Well, not even that, I mean, that, 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 my team camp has 48 kids every week and we're maxed on bus capacity at that point. But, um, that's more like our kind of random parents' night out or whatever, something like, you know, some of our small programs that are only getting 10 kids anyway, you know. That was really where that applied to, so.
But I, I think that if, if the program is canceled on, from, if the town cancels the program, 100%.
Yeah.
We're not even gonna keep the $15.
Yeah, yeah.
100% goes back. And we'll put that in the policy as, as a sentence.
Okay. And that is what we did in, in 2020 when we did cancel camp. Was, that was a full refund to everybody.
Refund everything, yeah. No, it makes sense, I just, because, because it was lined out, I just wanted to bring it up and make sure.
Yep.
Right.
We weren't gonna go crazy.
Nope.
Alright, so I, I, I'm in favor of what you presented here, I have no problems with it.
Nancy?
Thanks, Matt, just a question, the $50 like registration fee, that's for every single week. So if they're going the whole summer, it's like, whatever, 300 or 350 or something like that. Okay, and that, that's on top of the tuition and not, or, or deducted from the tuition?
Deducted from the tuition from the week.
If they attend.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not in, it's not an on top of the.
Yeah, that's why.
Deposit.
Yeah, it's a deposit on their, the tuition for the week. I have not set rates for camp yet, I'm still working on the budget, but say it's $300 this year. They would pay 50 down and then their balance would be 250.
Right.
So, yeah, it would come off the total.
The language is written, I didn't see that, that was my question, does, does that come off the tuition?
Well, it does say deposit, which is normally how that works.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
It's a non, non-refundable, non-transferable deposit for the week, so.
Barbara? Okay, does anyone have any other questions?
Do you want me to make a motion?
No, I think we're waiting.
We're waiting to see if Nancy's, it's that. I'm sorry. Are you all set? You all set Nancy?
I think so.
Okay.
They can, they don't have to pay, it's, it's not, it isn't six weeks before June, whatever. It's six weeks before June, six weeks before.
Yeah, look at. You guys are talking amongst yourselves and.
I, I can, I can. If you'd like, I can clarify what they're talking about over here. So yeah, so it's not, the whole balance needs to be paid on six weeks before camp starts. It's six weeks before week one, week one's payments due. And if they're going weeks two, three, four, five, it's six weeks.
Every week after that, yeah.
Each, each week, so it's kind of a moving date.
So we're not looking. So we're not looking if somebody has all eight weeks and in Matt's case, the $300, we're not looking for, you know, all eight weeks, 50, 400, we're not looking for $2,600 given to us in May. May, we're looking for, you know, each week going forward on that.
Okay, Mackenzie, you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that the town council accept the proposed changes to the summer camp refund pop 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 policy.
Second.
Motion made by Mackenzie Murphy, second by Tom Keeney. Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify that that's going to be with the two changes that we talked about. One, the timeline for the doctor's note and then
Yeah.
a line that says if we cancel due to low enrollment, refunds will be given.
Yes.
Excellent.
With the changes.
With the recommended changes.
With changes, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? 600.
If I can just, I want to just throw out a comment about camp just because it's somewhat relevant. Three years ago, Department of Education came out with this program, a grant scholarship program called Rekindling Curiosity. And it was basically a scholarship towards summer camps for either low income families or families that had a disability. And, you know, any sort of IEP essentially qualified for up to $750. And we we participated in this program the last two years. This past summer, campers received almost $30,000. They basically they apply through the state and then the state sends us the check for that child's payment. So we got almost $30,000 and it was originally started as a COVID learning, lost learning kind of thing. But we actually found out last week that they are bringing the program back for 2024. So we hope to have be able to offer even more scholarships next year. So because prior to prior to that program existing, they used to give out through the welfare department, maybe $3,000 or $4,000. And so this is like 10 times over. So it's really nice that it is coming back again this year. So, yeah, I just want to throw it out there kind of for the better for the public that people might be.
Barbara, do you have any comment?
Just a question. If anyone in our community wishes to make a donation to send a needy child to summer camp, who should they make that donation to?
Well, the donation, they can send it to me and then we turn it over to you guys to accept that donation and then those are handled through the welfare department. They fill out an application with Pat Murphy to determine that they are eligible based on the the income criteria.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tom?
I don't remember the timeline, but you talked at one point about an after school program.
Yes.
Are we doing that or
We are.
And how's that going?
Fairly well, not as great as I would have hoped, but doing fairly well. So we started the after school program in in September when school started. We initially started with Thornton's Ferry School. You know, the our our hope for this first year was to get, you know, 27 to 30 kids a day. And, you know, we started off a little, you know, started off a little slow. We were getting, you know, some kids were coming to us five days a week, but not all of them were. We were getting some with two and three and, you know, whatever. And so we were only averaging about 18 a day. So we were lower than where we wanted to be. And but we figured out that we have to, you know, obviously, we have to charter a bus from student transportation, which costs us $200 a day, which is a big expense. But we figured out that our bus was coming from the high school first. And normally he was coming to the park, picking up Hannah, bringing her over to the school so she could do, you know, check the kids on the bus and then they come back. Well, because he's coming to the high school, we were able to actually add Master Cola to the operation. And so we've picked up a few more kids now. We're averaging like 22, 23. So we're a little low still where we want, where we'd like to be. But we're doing okay. But we are covering two of the three schools now. We are getting a lot of the kind of kindergarten and first grade. So in theory, they'll be with us, you know, for the next several years. I'm hopeful that that because we just added Master Cola in in kind of mid October. So I'm kind of hoping that maybe when we get to January, that maybe we'll pick up a few more. But it may be next fall before we really get to where we hope to be. So it's but otherwise, on a daily basis, they're they're doing good things and and they're seem to be enjoying it and no, no major concerns or issues.
Good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you very much, Matt. Okay. I knew I'd be calling you for something else, Don. Okay, withdrawal request from the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund, the town council to consider the request for withdrawal of funds for the purchase of a loader and a welder at the wastewater treatment facility.
So I know Leo wants to talk all about this. He even did a presentation for everybody. So Leo has
Not the welder.
Not the welder? Oh, no.
But I see the loader there.
Demonstration.
Leo is officially now taken the assistant deputy, assistant director of
Congratulations.
DPW wastewater, so.
Thank you.
But anybody who knows Leo, his job is not filled as as of this present time. So we're still looking for a chief operator. And Leo is is doing both jobs and he he will ask if anybody is has the credentials to be chief operator, please apply.
Yes, please.
Who's going to go with the hot one first?
Why don't you introduce yourselves just for the record?
My name's Leo Gudet. I am the assistant director of Public Works Wastewater, the town of Merrimack wastewater facility.
Don? We know who you are. We just want to make it public.
Don Twamala, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
And supporter.
And supporter.
Okay, so we are here tonight to request the release of funds in the amount of 1248,900 for the purchase of a wheel loader at the wastewater treatment facility. Current loader that we are looking to replace is circa 2006, which is the same year that I started working for the town of Merrimack. It's been in continuous service for the last 17 years. Is beginning to reach the more really is past its its life expectancy. CIP identifies these machines to last about 10 years. So we're seven years over that. It's got approximately 10,000 hours, which puts it at the upper end of typical hours that we see on machines like that. Did a lot of research. I'm going to confess that I'm not a loader expert, so I did some homework to find out some of this information. Did the councils receive the memo? They did. So as you know, based on the memo, the load the loaders are critical to the operation of the composting facility. We provide a service not only to the residents, but other communities that bring their sludge for composting. This is the the current loader. You can see that it is you know, beginning to show signs of wear and tear. It's a very harsh environment between the dust and the rust and and everything else and has served the town very well. So it's really, it's really time to change this guy out. The big thing here is we need the three loaders and the reason being is that if we lose one of the loaders, it inhibits our ability to run the operation. And again, we're providing a service. I mean, tipping fees last year for sludge alone brought in nearly $400,000 in revenue. So and plus we load the compost that goes out and we got about $144,000 worth of revenue. And that was about 500,000 total. So where was I going with that? So the new loader that we want to buy is a Caterpillar 938. I put a G, but that's what we have now. It's actually, they don't make the G anymore, apparently. The the bid was for a 938M. So we went out to bid recently. The bids came back. And I think you had in the memo, you saw how the bid results came out. We had six bidders with the lowest being the Devalon Dusan. I in my research, I realized that Dusan had been bought out by Hyundai recently and they rebranded themselves into this company called Devalon. So they're a little bit new to the market. And then JCB Caterpillar, Volvo, John Darren Case. As you can see, the low bidder, apparent low bidder was the Devalon at 203,000 dollars with the next low bidder being 235,000. After careful consideration, I am recommending to go with the Caterpillar for a number of reasons, which are listed in the memo. And Devalon took several exceptions to the bid specification. The one that concerned me the most was the parts availability and the willingness to they took a complete exception to number six in the the bid specification. And again, we cannot really afford to be without loaders or three loaders. If we lose one, then we have hinders our ability to do the job effectively. So if that exception to me speaks to the fact that they're probably gonna have a problem providing parts in a timely manner, which means downtime, which means trouble for us completing our our tasks. The other thing that I pointed out in my memo is that it's the devil you know. We've had Caterpillar machines most of the time that I've been with the town. I did a lot of research online. Caterpillar is the number one manufacturer of loaders in the world and other heavy equipment. And their resale value is at the top of the market as well. So if we're going to hold on to a loader for 10 years and then want to get something in trade for it, it makes sense to purchase a machine that's going to hold its resale value, much like any other vehicle that one would buy. So my concern is if we spend the $203,000 on a inferior machine, in the long run, the residents are going to actually not get the value for the dollar that they would from the Caterpillar. So I know it's a more expensive machine to the tune of $40,000, but I truly believe that I can recommend to council confidently that we're going to be buying a machine that's going to serve the taxpayers or the ratepayers of the town for the 10 years or beyond, have resale value when it comes time to replace it. And it's just, we may end up paying more in the long run for the lesser machine. That's really what I'm hanging my hat on and it's just the it's quality. It's a quality machine. I mean, they're all loaders. But looking at some of the other research I did, Caterpillar consistently ranks at the top in in all categories. And just even riding around and, you know, on my bike to work in the morning or whatever, it's you're looking at job sites now. It's like when you buy a new car and you see who's driving what. I drive by job sites and I'm like, okay, what are they, you know, am I seeing a Dusan? What am I seeing over there? And more often than not, it's Caterpillars and Komatsu is another popular machine. However, they they did not bid. And so my recommendation to council is that we go and we buy the Caterpillar. It's still under the amount that was, you know, identified in the CIP at $250,000. And I truly believe it's a good value for the town.
Tom? Do you want to go ahead, Barbara?
Okay, so I I appreciate your inputs here and I agree with a lot of what you're saying. I just want to go over a couple of things to make sure I understand. This is 17 years old, but is it, are we running into lots of repair and downtime?
No, sir, not at this time. That's one of the things, the hallmark of this machine. It's it's been very reliable. But if we go back to if we go back to the slides of the existing, unfortunately, we can't zoom them in, but what what you can't see closely here is the amount of corrosion that's it's on the metal. And I mean, it is getting in the upwards ends of its hours of life. So typical machines in my research, seven to 12,000 hours. We're already at 10,000 hours. Some of the like the knuckle and stuff is like a 13,000 hour life expectancy. And it's just a critical piece of equipment that we really can't afford to be without. So to stay ahead of the curve, I mean, it makes sense to replace it now. The other two loaders that we purchased a few years back are already, one is seven years old and the other one's already six years old. So they're already in the 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 middle of their life, if you will. And so, you know, to keep the operation running, it may be fine. And then all of a sudden, we're going to have a problem with it is is my fear.
Okay, that's part of my next question. We have three loaders that we're using out there and you need you need three in order to manage the whole program.
Ideally, because if we have if we have a breakdown, then we have a backup loader. One of the things that I mentioned is that you have raw sludge coming in that has to be blended and then put into the bays. That, you know, per our permitting for, you know, selling compost, finished compost, we have to ensure that we're not contaminating the material that's going to go out in the trucks with the loader that's mixing the raw material. And so if one of those other loaders breaks down, we have to have an uncontaminated loader. So typically, this this guy with the larger bucket, which is why we went for the larger bucket, is the machine that does a lot of the loading the trucks and moving the windrows. It's got the larger bucket. It's more efficient instead of running around with a four yard bucket. So it saves fuel time. It just makes the operation more efficient. In addition to that, as I noted in the the memo, that the Sorku has to go out and do some stuff at the siphon stations and things like that. And so sometimes they're taking the loader off site. And again, if one of them's, one of them's broken, we can get by without maybe screening that day so that the Sorku can still do their work with the loader. So ensures and also we've lent the transfer station that CAT loader at times when their loader's broken down. So it serves purpose not only to the wastewater, but but to other departments. So.
Okay, I I appreciate that. I I remember talking about the loaders for the wastewater plant in the past. I didn't remember how many years old the the other ones were at this point.
Yeah, when I first got here, we used to have a yearly changeout where we there's a buyback program and we'd get three new loaders every year. We own the buckets and we every year we'd get a new machine. It was it was a nice thing, but it was a $90,000 a year expense. And at the time,
That's a lot.
Keith Hickey was the town manager and that's when we started buying the loaders outright. And we, this is one of the ones that was part of the program and we kept it since I've gotten here. Been here, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, that was my question. If it worked or not.
Oh, no, it does work and it still has trade value. The other thing we have to consider is if we wait another couple of years. Well, it's going down. So, I mean, CAT gave offered 50,000, a couple of the other companies offered 30. That's sort of a numbers game like when you buy a car, right? But I I think the true value is probably in the $30,000 range, probably. Another two years from now, you know, it might not even be worth it. We might be just auctioning it off at the state auction or something like that. And we'll just be buying a loader outright. So I think, you know, waiting another couple of years, even if it is operable, is probably not in the best interest all the way around.
Should we have motion for two separate motions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the loader. If one wanted to make.
This is only, there's only one thing in this item, right?
And the welder.
Oh, the welder. We haven't even talked about the welder.
Haven't talked about.
That's what I was asking. Should we have two separate motions?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to withdraw funds from the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund for the purchase of a loader for
Motion made by Andy Hunter, second by
I'll make a second.
Mackenzie Murphy.
And to allow the town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? 600. Okay, now you can talk about the welder.
The welder. Another favorite. Okay, so we're requesting the purchase of this welder. As council may remember, in I believe it was fiscal 2122, there was approval for the purchase of a crane truck for maintenance on pump stations and other places around the wastewater facility. As part of completing that that maintenance truck, we're requesting to purchase this welder that would mount on the truck. I'm sure people have driven around, you see these service trucks with the crane on there and they've got the welder as part of that truck. So when they go to work on a pump station, if there's something that needs to be welded, they're not running back to to get a welder that they then have to load in a truck. They have everything they need on that crane truck that we already own. The existing welder is probably at least 20 years old. It was here when I got here when I was hired and that was about almost 18 years ago. And so it's it's time. So we went out to bid. Granger was the low bidder. And then we had Technology International, which I've never heard of in my life, and KB7 Resources. heard of in my life, and KB7 Resources, eighty-four-seventy-seven. As you saw in my memo, the interesting piece of this is that sometimes going out to bid may or may not always be in the best interest of the town, because we had Air Gas East, who was given the bid packet, who didn't bid on the welder, and we have a confirmed price of seventy-five-hundred dollars for the same welder. So about nine-hundred dollars less by not taking the low bidder in this particular bid. So my recommendation is, we've confirmed that it's the same welder. You should have the documentation that I asked the maintenance manager to get, showing the price for that, and that would be from Air Gas East. And it comes out to seventy-five-hundred dollars, and that's the welder with the cover. So my recommendation is to buy it from Air Gas East, and we have the right to reject any and all bids, and whatever's in the best interest of the town. And in my opinion, obviously, the same welder for nine-hundred dollars less is definitely in the best interest of the town and the ratepayers.
Did they give us a proposal on the seventy-five-hundred dollars before we went out to bid?
No.
So how do you have something from them? Wouldn't that be considered a bid if you have a firm price from them for seventy-five?
Well, it came after... So we got the bids back, and then the maintenance manager said, he goes, the guy, he can't believe it, I was just on Air Gas' website, and the welder was like, whatever. I think it was a little higher.
So it's their advertised price?
Yeah, you know, on the web, and I said, is that a fact? He said, yeah. I said, well, if you can get something in writing from them confirming that that's the price. So it wasn't like we didn't know this beforehand. They got the bidder's packet from Kelly and chose not to bid, and I don't know if it's because their advertised price is always lower. I think we were hoping we were gonna get it for less than seventy-five-hundred dollars, if I'm being honest with you. So I was a little surprised that they came in as high as they did, but again, my recommendation would be to expend the...
Honestly, we cannot do that.
You can't.
Because of our purchasing policy. So my recommendation would be for the council to approve up to seventy-five-hundred dollars, not to exceed seventy-five-hundred dollars, for a welder. We send out to all the bidders that we're not accepting any bids. We wait thirty days, and we rebid it.
So one of the other people might say, okay, I'll do it for seventy-five.
Yes. But that would be my recommendation. We cannot... We opened up a bid, and if we start doing this with bids, people are not gonna bid for the town of Merrimack. So the only way we can do this is to say, we are not accepting any bids on the welder. We wait the prescribed number of days, and we rebid it. However, at the time, the council can say not to exceed up to seventy-five-hundred dollars for a welder. And this way, when the bids do come back, we can move forward with the purchase of the welder without having to come back to the council, because we have a prescribed bid policy.
What happens in thirty days if you don't get any bids at seventy-five-hundred dollars? You come back and get an amendment?
Gotta come back and get more money if that's the case. But if they can get it online for seventy-five-hundred dollars... I know a couple of people at Air Gas that... I'll tell them to bid.
That will come up with a bid.
That will...
So you need a motion to reject the bids?
No. All you need is a motion is to not to exceed seventy-five-hundred dollars for the purchase of a welder.
So I move that we authorize up to seventy-five-hundred dollars for the purchase of a welder for the wastewater department.
Second.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, second by Barbara Healy. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, six-zero-zero. Thank you for resolving that dilemma.
Thank you, Paul.
And that's it for you guys. No, the answer is no.
Leo should run, yeah.
Well, all I have down here is...
I learned something, so I appreciate it.
I understand, no. The next one. I'm sitting here, why is she not running? She can't run. Okay, I know that Paul was gonna present this, too. Okay, last on the agenda. New position request for Public Works Administration Civil Engineer. The town council to consider the establishment of a civil engineer position at grade seventeen of the town current wage schedule and classification plan. Paul?
Hey, Madam Chair. As you know, in the budget, we have two deputy director positions for DPW. One was an environmental, we approved, and one was a town engineer. Dawn coming through asked the council to hold off, or asked me to hold off, on hiring the DPW director for town engineer. We hired Leo for the environmental, and she wanted to see what the needs of her department were going to be going forward. Dawn has since come back and talked to myself and Sharon, HR Director, Sharon Berutich, and said that really one of her needs is, excuse me, is a civil engineer to help out because of the amount of construction that is going on in this town, on the roads, on bridges, other things that do go on, like the drainage project that happened up the road here, that's going on for the next couple of years, in the tree streets, this bridge that we just completed in a hamster's road, the new walkway that we're providing, the path that we're providing, the Swissway path down over on Salhegan River path. All these things have Dawn touches, and a civil engineer coming out of college would be helping Dawn in going out, doing inspections, looking at the plans, and things of that sort, for her to move forward. She's here to answer any questions if the council has them. But in looking at the pay scale, we feel that grade seventeen of the current wage classification is right in line with where we were at with other positions. This would be in line kind of with the environmental engineering position that we had a couple of years ago in the budget. And we feel that by doing a civil engineer, that would allow a person to grow into the town of Merrimack. Unbeknownst to me, when we were looking at engineers with a PE stamp, they have to have almost five years' experience before they can get their PE stamp. We can't compete monetarily with somebody with five years' experience with a PE stamp, bringing them in at an entry-level position in the town of Merrimack. So we figured that we've kind of used this position, and this person can grow. They can come in as a civil engineer underneath the tutelage of Dawn and Leo, who both have PE stamps. They can go get tested to become a PE. And as they progress in their civil engineering steps, if down the road, we make it a town engineer, once they get their PE. And it gives them a career path in the town of Merrimack, so we can basically home-grow our own town engineer assistant, deputy director of DPW town engineering. So we felt that this was a great way, great opportunity, get some help in here, and to get a civil engineer in here to help us with a lot of the projects that are out there right now that we do. When Dawn was town engineer, she did a lot of the design work for a lot of these projects, and we do still do a lot of design work for our own drainage and some of our own sewer projects. So this person would help out with that as well.
So my understanding is the deputy director position, town engineer, would remain, but remain unfilled?
It would remain in the job classifications, but in the budget, it would be zeroed out.
Okay. So on this budget...
Coming up, yes.
It would be just the one... If it were approved, it would be one position, which is less than...
Right, the town engineering position.
For this budget.
But it would stay in the wage and classification.
Other questions? Barbara?
So how many engineers do we have currently?
Right now, we have two on, Dawn and...
And how many have we had in the past? Three?
We have had three.
Okay. So I'm also a little confused with... So this is a person with a degree, an engineering degree, with at least one-year experience. What does it mean when I look at this page, that they have one to two years' specific vocational preparation?
We'll get you the answer.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Yeah, the... When you look at the job summary, it says you should be... You should have your bachelor's degree plus one year of experience. But when I look at the third page of that, which it doesn't have a title, I'm sorry. I think it's... It says, under specific vocational preparation requirements, it says one to two years.
Which is consistent.
No.
Because it says one year's experience.
Yeah, but this says two years' experience.
One to two. To two, yes.
But this says one-year experience. Well, what is vocational experience?
Go ahead, Sharon.
Go ahead. I don't even know what sheet you're looking at, I'm sorry.
Right here. If it has number three on the top.
Yeah, three of...
Keep on going.
Yeah.
Job summary.
In the middle, it says specific vocational. Do you see it?
Yeah. One to two is one.
That's what I'm...
Yeah, but what's vocational experience? That's training.
We will typically include the education required, the bachelor's degree, so we should change this.
Okay. So it's not me. Thank you.
Okay. So you're changing the vocational to...
Bachelor's degree.
So you were talking about vocational, not the years.
Yeah, yeah. Because when you look at vocational preparation, that's like, I think, trade school...
You're absolutely right. I was looking at the years.
Apprenticeships in the union type thing.
Gotcha. Google, YouTube.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Can you remind me, the deputy director, what pay grade? Twenty, I think. Twenty?
Sharon has that in front of her.
The assistant is twenty. The deputy is twenty-three.
Oh, you asked for assistant or deputy?
Both.
Yes, both. Thank you.
Our assistant director position is the wastewater assistant director. That's twenty. That's Leo.
Okay, yeah.
And then the deputy directors are at twenty-three.
Which is... And it's one of the twenty-three slots that we're currently leaving open if we approve this and hire this, and then that will be the growth slot for this position. Okay.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially.
Potentially.
That's intention.
What's seventeen?
Intentionally, potentially.
What is seventeen?
It is getting close to ten. It's in your packet.
I know, but I couldn't find that. I could find the vocational thing, but I...
What's seventeen? What, pay grade seventeen? Who's in pay grade seventeen, Sharon?
Pay grade seventeen.
Seventeen is administrative assessor, building inspector, parks and rector, town clerk, tax collector, media services coordinator.
I found it.
So it's in line with...
It's more of a starting engineering position.
Engineering position. What... And really, what we're looking at is the salary range for a seventeen. Sharon, do you have that in front of you?
Sixty-one to eighty-three, which is...
The next page.
Yeah, to eighty-nine, which is really a starting entry for an engineer, and they can move with that. Eighty-nine would definitely... If we get somebody with several years of experience, they'd be up at eighty-nine, but if they're coming in with just, you know, one year, they would be...
Out of college or something.
Down more towards the sixty-five, sixty.
Any other questions?
No, I look... I agree. It sounds like a great idea. I think it is a better idea to start out with a newer person that can learn and work towards a PE. Trying to get somebody to hire him into a position like this with PE is gotta be difficult, as described, and I... So I agree with what you're proposing.
Thank you. Barbara, you have another question?
Well, it's kind of a comment, too. I'm a little uncomfortable leaving a position out there. I know we're trading off the salary so that we don't pay for an additional engineer, but we still have a position out there that we just said we aren't using. So what controls are you putting around that so that in, you know, beginning of the year, maybe you decide you want that?
Because it wouldn't be in the budget, and I have to come back and ask for the money.
Okay.
It's basically what we're doing is we're not taking out of the job classification. We're not removing it. We're not taking out of the job classification pay scale. We're leaving it in there. It's not going away. When you see the budget on December seventeenth, that position will not be in there. It will be this new...
There'll be no money budgeted.
Civil engineer position.
Okay.
The only way that we'd be able to fund that position is for me to come back and say, "Town Council, I'd like to fund this position," or like we have done in the past with our night custodian, where we have come back and asked for the night custodian position. That's the rep.
I don't want to find out all of a sudden that now we're hiring that position, because in this economy, not only the economy, but the fact that we just went out with this humongous tax increase.
That we had little to do with, but yes, it's horrible.
Yeah, but where do the fingers get pointed?
Well, that... You just reversed the...
You know what I mean?
Let's make it clear. The fingers, we redirect, period.
Well, I agree.
You don't take something when you're not guilty.
But in this environment, you don't necessarily add positions as well.
This is not gonna be a...
No, I understand what you're saying.
The deputy position is not... At once, it's budgeted in this fiscal year, yes, it will be, because we're going out. But when the new budget, it will not be a budgeted position in the new budget, and that's where the check is. And if somebody wants to come in and grow into this position, it would have to be a budgeted position.
It's gonna be a net decrease for the town.
Yes, it will be a decrease.
Exactly. Cool. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, I'm open for a motion? Anyone?
Move... Go ahead. Move to establish a civil engineer position at grade seventeen of the town's current wage schedule and classification plan.
Second.
Motion made by Andy Hunter, seconded by Tom Koenig. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, six-zero-zero passes.
Thank you.
And you've spent all you can spend now, Dawn.
Yeah, Dawn. You've got your budget done.
You've spent your budget out now.
Okay, next minutes. Of course, this was a CIP meeting, so it was fairly lengthy. Turn the page. It's the meeting minutes of November second. Any changes, anyone?
If I can find it again, I'll tell you.
I'm not hearing an onslaught of...
I don't know if like the spelling matters, but on page twenty-five, line thirty-two, the last name of Frano is spelt wrong. It's F-R-I-C-A-N-O.
Line number?
Page twenty-five, line thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
F-R-I-C-A-N-O.
F-R-I. Okay, thank you.
And a person's name is very important, so thank you for pointing it out.
Yeah, exactly. Any other? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the town council meeting on November second of two thousand and twenty-three.
As modified.
As is amended.
Mackenzie Murphy made the motion, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, six-zero-zero. Comments from the press? Do we have to keep that? The press never comes.
Not anymore.
I mean, should we just... We'll talk about getting rid of that line. Do we have to do... Okay. Comments from the public? There's none here either. Comments from the council?
Just another monthly reminder about the REITs across America...
Just another monthly reminder about the Reeds Across America event on Saturday, December 16th at 12 noon. We did sell enough reeds to put one on each of the graves of all of our deceased veterans, but we will continue to take orders, I think, for a few more days for next year, because actually, we had to use 141 from last year to cover us this year. So, we try to stay a little bit ahead just to make sure that we have enough. So, thank you. And we will be having a refreshment, a little get together at Al Lady Mercy Church downstairs in the basement, right after the, the ceremonies of hot chocolate, coffee. December 16th.
16.
At 12 noon. Thank you.
Barbara?
And next week is Thanksgiving, so just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy the time with your friends and family.
Excellent. Same to you, Barbara.
And as we approach the holiday season, be careful out there and enjoy yourselves.
All set?
Thank you, Merrimack.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.